First, 2020. And I believe you are all able to unmute yourselves. So I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alders Vervier. Oh, I see. Weyhelia? I think I saw her.
Now I'm unmuted, I'm here.
Thank you. Vice President Abbas is excused. Alders Alboris?
There's no video.
I know Alder Alboris was trying to get in, I don't know if he got in.
And staff, please make sure you're muted.
I see him there, I can come back around. Balday?
Yes.
Bidar?
Present.
President Carter?
Present.
Alders Evers?
Muted. Okay, thank you, I'm present now.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Here.
Furman?
Present.
Harrington McKinney?
Present.
Heck?
Here.
Henick?
Present.
Kemble?
Here.
Lemer?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Pastor Jacomo?
Here.
Rumel?
Present.
Skidmore?
Here.
Tierney?
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have quorum.
Thank you. I will mute you all again. And ask our tech staff to read the instructions for the meeting, please.
Thank you. Welcome to our virtual meeting, we're going to cover a few basic items before beginning. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. To members and city staff, members, if you are able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. The chair clerk and tech facilitators are responsible for meeting and unmuting committee members. Use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. During any roll call, all panelists will be unmuted briefly. Staff, click raise hand when you are asked a question. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak. The name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the council, please send it to the email listed on today's agenda. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Just a note, we do have a very large number of folks registered for public comment for tonight's meeting, and so I would remind everyone that for public hearings, the time limit is five minutes; for other items, the time limit is three minutes, and we will be sticking to those time limits fairly strictly, so that we can move through our meeting. And that will take us to suspension of the rolls. President Carter.
Suspension of the rules. 2.04 Order of Business. 2.05 Introduction of Business. 2.24 Ordinances. And 2.25 Resolutions for Items So Designated on the Agenda.
Second. Libra, seconded to suspend the rules. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of suspension of the rules? Seeing no objection, the rules are suspended, and we will take up item one. Tech staff, Alder Alboris is having trouble connecting, he's going to try and leave and come back again. So item one is a presentation, and to start, I'm going to turn the floor over to our poet laureate, Angie Trudal Vasquez. You should be unmuted now, Angie.
I am unmuted, and thank you so much. I am so pleased to be here to introduce to you Nathan J. Reed. Nathan's work has appeared in Fox Cry Review, Wisconsin People and Ideas, Poetry Hall, A Pop-Up Anthology of Madison Writers and Artists, and other publications. He serves on the boards of the Council for Wisconsin Writers, the Wisconsin Poet Laureate Commission, and the Wisconsin Fellowship of Poets. He is the former senior editor for the Wisconsin Review, and former guest editor for Bramble Lit Magazine. His first collection of poems, "Bots on Tonight," was published in 2017, and his newest book, Persistence of Perception, came out July 2020, both by Finishing Line Press. You can learn more about him at his website, which is nathanjreed.com. Please welcome our guest poet.
Thank you, Angie, and good evening, council. Today, we are all unraveled, our lives pulled. Exposing the accordion that blooms from the fragile bonds of our paper doll folds, we realize we are time travelers, lovers and killers, telepaths and dumb luck dreamers. I am my father and my unborn son. I am the woman on the bus, the child in her arms, the driver cussing to himself as his pancreas flinches against each pothole. And the universe reveals to us how we are the most unlikely of every fat truth. And the walls we climb daily are laden with false bricks that can be pushed in like a button, unlocking doors that lead to new space. But even there, we get the feeling we have been here before, over and over and over. Somewhere in a rundown apartment, there is an ancient prince. He's on his 17th life. He doesn't understand where he is, the noise in the street, or why these coliseums are dripping from his eyes. There is a sparrow resting her wings. She's the embodiment of short and sweet, and every day she's pretty sure that you and I and this whole damn world is something she dreamt up last night in her sleep. We are loopers, rabbit hole divers, matrix upon matrix. There is the illusion that we are each an individual essence, but in truth, we share one soul. It is a firefly caught between the canvas and the paint, and it floats across this portrait of existence, filling each life as it does so, meaning someday, somehow, you will be the person sitting next to you. Some way, some life, you was yourself from across the room. Trust me, for I have been you. I have smiled all your smiles. Your hearts pump my blood. Our pulses are the waves, humanity, the moon, I have been you. You are loners and regretters. Heavily you sit without a dream to hold your hand. I have seen you trying to crawl back through the rooms you have already walked through, as if you could rewind, cut, copy, paste, and create anew, as if that were some kind of miracle. But tall and glowing and tall and alive, you have already walked through. I have seen you, you starlight, you midnight wanderers. Don't worry about the phone calls from family you ignored. They have already forgiven you with hugs and pot roasts. Don't worry about dead friends. Go visit your dreams again and again. They are not tormented or lost, it just means you love them so much more than the time they were given, for you are them and they are you. I have been you. Do not fester in a heap of sour love gone wrong, but rise above it, so opportunity may find you. If you have hurts at the bottom of your heart, do not go looking at them through the bottoms of your drinks. Reach down, take them in your hands, crumble them to pieces and toss them up to the heavens that swallow everything yet say nothing. Because this life is a moving cliff, and the day we were born was the day we let go. So unclench your fists, learn to make music with the air around your fingertips. The only moment is right here, right now, and right here, right now. You'll find every other moment, be a moment, be the wind that blows through the cemetery where children play. Be the relief, and somebody smile at the end of the day. Be these words, so they no longer mine. Be soft lips for the springtime, be boogie woogie jazz and soul. Be boogie woogie jazz and soul. When something wrong is going down, be the voice that yells, "No!" Be the sun, be the moon, be a cry for a cry and a truth for a truth. Tonight, unravel with me. You are free. Me, I have been you. I have seen you without a dream to hold your hand, so hold my hand, and we, the firefly, will flow out a new path, resting now and then on the canvas, absorbing rich paint, for I have been you. And when I walk around this world and stare into your face, as I know, you have been me too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nathan, that was beautiful. And thank you, Angie, for bringing us poetry on a regular basis. And in that spirit, let's move on to the second item on our agenda, which is Legisstar 63133, awarding the 14th Annual Jeffrey Clay Erlinger Civility in Public Discourse Award to Rabbi Bonnie Margulis. And I believe President, actually, I think we're going to start with a video, and then President Carter will go to you to read the resolution.
We wrote because Jeff was going to have spinal fusion and be in what they call a halo, a metal rim, and then cast on his shoulders and bolted.
All the way down his trunk.
Yeah. We mean not to survive the surgery. And so we said, you know, what would you like to do? This is going to be a really big task for you, and so we want to kick it off with something that'd be really special.
Mr. Rogers?
Hey, Jeff. I'm glad to see you. Thank you very much for coming by. Can you tell my friends what it is that made you need this wheelchair?
Sure. Well, when I was about seven months old, I had, I had a tumor, and it broke the nerves to tell my hands and legs what to do.
I see.
And I got a wheelchair when I was four years old.
That was your first one?
Mm-hmm.
When you were four?
Uh-huh.
He told Jeff before they started that they would have a chat and then sing a song together.
I think he said we might sing a song. I remember, because I mean, I was sort of surprised, what, he's going to start singing a song? This is totally not even what song. It's you I like. It's not the things you wear. It's not the way you do your hair. But it's you I like. The way you are right now. The way down deep inside you. Not the things that you hide. Not your fancy chair. That's just beside you. But it's you I like. Every part of you. Your skin, your eyes, your feelings, whether old or new. I hope that you remember, even when you're feeling blue. That it's you I like. It's you yourself. It's you. It's you I like. And it's you I liked, yeah.
Thanks.
And there must be times when you do feel blue.
Uh-huh.
I'm not feeling blue right now, though.
Me neither.
I'm so glad that you came today.
Thanks.
I remember asking one of the staff people that was there, well, you know, what do you think? They didn't go, okay. Don't, this is good, this is good.
He had his surgery, he survived. Certainly, Mr. Rogers had an impact on who Jeff became, his sense of self.
You obviously.
Thank you. And actually, it is my honor now to read the resolution. Awarding the 14th Annual Jeffrey Clay Erlinger Civility in Public Discourse Award to Rabbi Bonnie Margulis. Whereas, the Madison Common Council created the Jeffrey Clay Erlinger Civility in Public Discourse Award in memory of Jeffrey Erlinger's great contributions to the city of Madison. And whereas, the Jeffrey Clay Erlinger Civility in Public Discourse Award Committee has selected Rabbi Bonnie Margulis, an individual who exemplifies the values that are fundamental to this award, and were so admirably demonstrated by Jeff Erlinger during his lifetime, as recipient of the 2020 Award. And whereas, Rabbi Bonnie is a faith leader who brings passion, knowledge, wisdom, and humility to every endeavor, who cares for all people regardless of faith, color, or ethnicity, and who has engaged in important social justice work that has made a significant impact on both the Madison community and the state of Wisconsin. And whereas, Rabbi Bonnie is the founder, president, and executive director of Wisconsin Faith Voices for Justice, a statewide interfaith organization working towards social and economic justice, which was formed in 2011 to raise the progressive religious voice in support of low-income and underserved populations. And whereas, Wisconsin Faith Voices for Justice, under Rabbi Bonnie's leadership and in partnership with Vozes de la Frontera and Centro Hispano of Madison, developed the Danes Sanctuary Coalition in 2017 to assist vulnerable immigrant and refugee communities by providing physical sanctuary and other services as needed, and by engaging in advocacy, direct action, education, and trainings on immigrant rights. And whereas, Wisconsin Faith Voices for Justice, upon receiving a grant, partnered with the Wisconsin Council of Churches to launch the Wisconsin Interfaith Voter Engagement Campaign to promote nonpartisan civic engagement education and voter outreach, focusing on underrepresented and disenfranchised voters in Wisconsin and elsewhere. And whereas, Rabbi Bonnie has connected and partnered with many other community organizations, including the African-American Council of Churches, the NAACP, the Urban League of Greater Madison, and We Are Many, United Against Hate. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Rabbi Bonnie Margulis has been chosen to receive the 14th Annual Jeffrey Clay Erlinger Civility in Public Discourse Award. And be it further resolved that Mayor Satya Rhodes Conway and the Common Council of the City of Madison, Wisconsin congratulate and thank Rabbi Bonnie for all she has done and continues to do for our Madison community. And I'll ask Alder Carter for a motion.
Move adoption.
And Alder Bidar for a second.
Second.
And we'll turn first to our award winner, Rabbi Bonnie.
Thank you. Thank you so much to the mayor, to the council, to the committee for this award. I'm deeply honored to receive this award on behalf of myself and Wisconsin Faith Voices for Justice. I was privileged to know Jeff Erlanger. He was a great champion for social justice and the rights of the disabled. He never let his own disability slow him down in his quest for justice. Rather, I think it galvanized him to use his voice and his natural charisma to speak out for those who are unable to speak for themselves. I'm very touched and humbled to receive an award given in his name. Jeff's memory will always be a blessing in our community. Thank you. Thank you all for this honor.
Rabbi, and then I will turn next to, I believe, I've lost you, Erica, who nominated Rabbi Bonnie. Erica, you should be unmuted.
I am now, thank you. Thank you, council, for inviting me today. I could not be more delighted to have had the opportunity to nominate Rabbi Bonnie Margulis for this award. As a fellow Temple Beth El member, I've known Rabbi Bonnie for over a decade in a wide range of contexts and capacities, and anyone who knows her would agree that she's a stellar example of the values that are so fundamental to the award and demonstrated by Jeff during his lifetime. Every time I see that video, I cry, so you'll excuse me as I'm still a little bit tearful. Some of the things I wanted to say have already been commented on in the resolution and came from my nomination statement, which was very hard to keep to the limit that was asked, because there are so many things I could say about Rabbi Bonnie Margulis. But mostly, it's just hard to imagine a nominee who's more deserving of this award honoring Jeff Erlanger's legacy and commitment to a lifetime of public service, social justice, constructive advocacy, and a celebration of diversity. And I just want to say congratulations, Rabbi Bonnie. It's a privilege to work with you and learn from you, I'm looking forward to many more opportunities, and I'm just thrilled tonight. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. We'll go next to the Erlingers before I go to council members.
Hi, everyone. Well, you know, of course, we've seen that video hundreds of times, but it never ceases to have an effect, and it's amazing, because that's, of course, not why the award is here, but I know it's a lot more interesting than watching him advocating. But in a sense, he was advocating in the video for the normality of disability. We really don't have anything to add, I did have some words here, but it's all been said in the wonderful, particularly the articulate, resolution. We've known Rabbi Bonnie for many years, just always admired what she does and the interfaith work. We really believe people of faith working together can make a difference, keep the world together, and work for social justice, and that's exactly what she's about, so we're very proud to be part of this.
Thank you very much. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I raised my hand very quickly because I wanted to make sure that I was in the queue. Bonnie is my friend, and I can call her friend. And the reason I can call her friend, I'm reminded that she always takes the road less traveled. Wherever the challenges are, I've seen her march, I've seen her sing, I've seen her cry, I've seen her stand in front of people and put her body in front of whatever was coming at other people. And this so epitomizes you. I've heard, there are tears in my eyes, because every year I'm wondering, how can people select such perfect examples of what this young man stands for in receiving this award? And Bonnie, you are the epitome of what this stands for. Thank you so much for sharing, thank you so much for caring, and thank you for putting everybody in front of yourself, and you are blessed in such an enormous way. And so I celebrate you, and I am so pleased to call you my friend.
Thank you, Barb, I really appreciate that, I consider you a friend, too.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bidar.
Thank you, Mayor. Erica, thank you for such a great nomination, and so great to see you in this setting. Rabbi Bonnie, you have been an amazing advocate for undocumented community. I've had the pleasure of seeing your work through Danes Sanctuary, and I cannot thank you enough for everything you have done for our undocumented community. And Howie and Pam, being your alder for the past 11 and a half years, well, actually a little less, before redistricting, you were alder Schmidt was your alder. So, but it's been a pleasure to be your alder, and a full circle for me tonight, as I ran for alder after serving on a committee with Jeff, and learning from him about the importance of service to our community. So I want to thank you. Thank you for the gift of Jeff to all of us who had the amazing pleasure to see him in action, and to learn from him about civility in public discourse. So thank you, and again, thank you, Rabbi Bonnie, for everything you're doing every day.
Thank you, Shiva.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Vervier.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to add my voice of congratulations to Rabbi Bonnie for certainly receiving this award this evening, but moreover, for her years and years of service to our community. I had the honor and privilege of calling Jeff Erlanger a friend for many years, and I absolutely know, Rabbi Bonnie, that your dedication and compassion for human rights and social justice and advancing really good public policy in that regard really exemplifies the reason why we have this award and what this award is indeed all about, and why we honor the legacy and memory of Jeff at this time, every year. So I absolutely want to congratulate Rabbi Bonnie for all of your work in this community over such a long period of time, and believe that you absolutely are well-deserving of this award, and frankly, I'm surprised that you weren't nominated before this year. Let me turn to Pam and Howie Erlanger, and as I attempt to do every year at this time, honor their beloved son. And for those that didn't have the honor and privilege of knowing Jeff personally, as a few of us left on the council did, for those that don't know, Jeff tragically passed away in 2007 at the young age of 36, but he accomplished so much in such a short period of time, and his legacy continues in so many ways. I had the pleasure of spending countless hours in Jeff's company over the years, largely in his capacity as president of the State Langdon Neighborhood Association, and he was such a dynamo, I can't articulate well what an impact he had on me and I know on so many others in our community. So I do want to thank Pam and Howie for their commitment to keeping their son's legacy alive all these many years. When we had the idea back in 2007 to create this award, in Jeff's memory, Pam and Howie were all in at the immediate moment they heard the idea, just as they were all in when they were approached by the Madison Parks Foundation recently to help with the campaign to fund a new fully accessible playground at Rannabon Park that will be named in memory of Jeff. They have continued their dedication not only to showing up at this meeting, and by the way, this award is actually codified in our ordinances, that's how important it is to us, and it is to be awarded at a common council meeting closest to Jeff's birthday of November 30th. And Pam and Howie, I can't thank you enough for being with us each and every one of those years since we created this award, to be here, to share not only the Mr. Rogers video with us, and for those that haven't heard this anecdote before, Tom Hanks stated that it was watching that video of a 10-year-old Jeff Erlanger that largely inspired him to accepting the role of Mr. Rogers in that movie a few years ago, Beautiful Day in the Neighborhood. Pam, you also deserve a lot of credit for serving on the award committee and reviewing nominations year in and year out, ever since the award was created. So I can't thank you both enough. Thank you for sharing Jeff with our community, all the years that he did the amazing work that he did in terms of public policy development, and his commitment, just as Rabbi Bonnie has, all these years of human rights. has, all these years of human rights and social justice. So congratulations Rabbi Bonnie on your well-deserved award. And thank you so much Pam and Howie for being with us and for continuing to share Jeff's legacy with us. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Wuhili.
Honey, what a wonderful nomination and award. It's really good to see you and your commitment, your care in bringing communities together, your passion for social justice, like Shiva said, undocumented, you know, communities. But also, what's profound for me is bringing interfaith, you know, the iftar, you know, where you invited many, many faiths in having the space to come and break bread and have iftar or dinner with each other. So you always inspire me, what you do, and I want to congratulate you, and thanks everyone who nominated her for this wonderful award. So good luck, and thank you so much for your service.
Thank you, Nasra.
Thank you, Alder. All right, I have no other Alders in the queue, so just before we move to a vote on this item, let me add my thanks and congratulations. Congratulations to Rabbi Bonnie for all of the work that you've done and this recognition of that work. And thank you Pam and Howie for your dedication to keeping Jeff's memory alive and to helping the city be a part of that. It's really an honor every year to be able to give this award out to such deserving people in our community. And I hope that Jeff's memory and Bonnie's example will live with all of us, you know, as we move through our work in the city. So thank you and congratulations again, Rabbi Bonnie.
Thank you.
Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the resolution? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of the resolution and congratulations All right, that was the fun part. So now we move on to the rest of our agenda. We have no petitions or communications. We have just double-checking. And I don't believe we have any, you know, we have no early public comment. So we'll move to the consent agenda.
Pardon, Mayor. We do have one person registered for early public comment, Alexandra Wilburn.
Okay, let's go to early public comment then. That's not coming up on my list, so I'll refresh. So do we have Alexandra Wilburn with us?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Could you please tell us what item you're registered on?
For, it's against the Hennec Surveillance Resolution. That's this evening, correct?
It is, so that is item 76.
Yes, thank you very much. And for, I believe it's Kemble and Prestigianos.
Prestigianos, it's the same item. Go ahead.
Yeah, okay. I'm for theirs even tentatively because of how important, you know, human trafficking, child human trafficking and finding those victims, which disproportionately, the police do not find black people at the rates that they will find white people. But I am very much against Hennecs, and I want to say, I work in digital media, I know a lot about digital media algorithms, they are not unbiased math equations. The tech industry is homogeneously white, so the very technology, even though I'm sure a lot of digital solutions companies, a lot of tech companies, they really conflate how good their technology is, because it's not, the way that they conflate it, they're very, you know, it will be not in a way that will get them in any legal trouble. Because if you and the buyer both know that you haven't been able to run a 10-year study because the technology is new, or if studies can be shown to be, depending on how many variations of human beings that they look at, like what that level is. So, and I especially think giving a department, which if you look at the statistics that the police gave to, I don't know if it was this body or one of the other committee meetings, showing that very disproportionately, the physical force is used at like, what, it's like 30, 40, 50% of black people, when the population of Madison's black people is like 7%. So giving a technology that is going to have bias against anyone who's not white, along with a department that has statistical evidence that they, that there are discriminatory people and discriminatory practices in place, it's going to pollute the investigative process even further, and, you know, furthers that surveillance state, which I think our country really has to reckon with the fact that we use too much surveillance in many cases. And that's all I got to say. Rest in peace Tony Robinson and fire Matt Kenny. I give the rest of my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next early public comment registrant is Shadira Kilfoi Flores of East Wilson. Do we have Shadira?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes. Will you tell us, please, what item you're registered on?
I'm registered on the same item, number 76.
Go ahead, thank you.
Okay. Just, I would really like to say thank you for, to the Alders who have written this, and to the Alders who have been meeting about the face recognition ban. I think that there's been a lot of time and thought put into this, and particularly how it will affect already marginalized communities. So I am not in favor of Hennec's proposal. I am in favor of the way that it was written originally, and the alternative that has been put forth. As we already know, this type of technology, while it can be helpful in certain situations, I think it's very manipulative in saying that we need to use it for all situations. Certainly, in situations of child trafficking, just human trafficking in general, I agree that it could be a very valuable tool. However, when it's just used in everyday life, it could be used as a very harmful tool. So that's where I'm at with this, and I'm going to yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you. That is our early public comment. Are there questions for either of the registrants? Seeing none, thank you both. And now we will go on to the presentation of the consent agenda. This is going to be a long one, so we'll just work through it. President Carter, you want to get started?
Yes, the consent agenda will be moved with the recommended actions listed for each item except: 1) Items which have registrants wishing to speak; 2) Items which require an extraordinary roll call vote and are not included on the consent agenda by unanimous consent; and 3) Items which Alder persons have separated out for debate discussion purposes. Agenda items 4 through 22 are public hearing items. Item number 5, 61686, recommended action: place on file without prejudice. Item 7, 61929, recommended action: refer to the January 5, 2021, Common Council Meeting. Item 8, 61589, recommended action: recessed public hearing, refer to the January 5, 21, Common Council Meeting. Item 20, 62174, substitute, recommended action: recessed public hearing, refer to the January 5, 21, Common Council Meeting. The following items are extra majority items. Item 56, 62894, recommended from the floor. This needs 15 votes, and the ones that I'm going to go from this all need 15 required votes. Item 57, 62907, recommend adoption. Item 59, 62928, recommend adoption. Item 61, 62964, recommend adoption. Item 64, 62978, recommend adoption. Item 66, 62985, recommend adoption. Item 67, 62986, recommend adoption. Item 68, 62987, recommend adoption. And item 69, 63063, recommend adoption. And all of those were from the Finance Committee. Agenda items as part of the consent agenda with additional recommendation. Item 53, 62652, recommend adoption. Item 54, 62655, place on file without prejudice. Item 55, 62660, recommend adoption. Item 58, 62927, recommend adoption. And those were also from the Finance Committee. Item 60, 62961, recommend adoption. Items 62, 62967, recommend adoption. Item 63, 62977, recommend adoption. Item 65, 62979, recommend adoption. Item 70, 63067, recommend adoption. Item 71, 63073, recommend adoption. Item 72, 63111, recommend adoption. And item 95, 63184, this is new business referral. These are the items that are for exclusion. Item 47, 62636. Item 48, substitute, 62393. Item 49, 62930. And item 70, well, let me go back, sorry about that. Item 48 and item 48 from the CCC, the motion failed. And item 49, recommend action was to re-refer. Item 76, 62413, substitute. And item 83, 62796, for staff presentation. And I think that's it. Did I miss anything?
Thank you, Alder. We'll go through a few things, but if I could first ask our tech facilitators to make Alder Bedar a co-host, please. So let me clear up a few things, and then we have a few additional Alders asking. So again, items number 4 through 22 are public hearing items, so we'll be taking those up. The extra majority items, the recommendation on item number 56 is to adopt. So 56, 57, 59, 61, 64, and 66, 67, 68, and 69, those are all extra majority items. The recommendation on all of them is adoption. And then, part of the consent agenda with additional recommendations, as read, 53, 54, 55, 58. 60, 62, 63, 65, 70, 71, 72. On 95, there's an additional referral requested to the Board of Public Works. And then for exclusion, item 47, is there a report of the CCEC on item 47? Did CCEC take that up today? Item 40, yeah, I think, hold on. I believe they did. Item 47, all my papers are everywhere, sorry about that. It's okay.
It was taken. It was taken on 11/17 by CCEC.
And was there a motion?
It was recommended to adopt.
Okay, thank you. So the base assumption there is to adopt. On 48, the motion to adopt failed, so the assumption is to place on file. On 49, the assumption of a motion is to refer to the January 5 Council Meeting. 76 is separated. 77, we have public comment. And then 83. Alder Hennec, additional exclusions?
Yes, please. Item 52 and 46. And if I could be added to item 52 as well, that would be great.
So item 46 and 52 will be added to the exclusion list, and the clerk will add Alder Hennec as a sponsor on, I'm sorry, which item?
52.
On 52.
Yep. And then, is it my understanding, it sounded like item 48 was also on the exclusion list, correct?
It is, yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Rumel.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to be recorded as a no vote on item number 51, Let's Start 63178.
The clerk will record Alder Rumel as a no vote on that item. We've got that, thank you, Alder. There any other exclusions? Requests to sponsor? Requests to record a particular vote? Disclosures? Recusals? Alder Harrington McKinney.
I just want to clarify that the item number 76 there- I just want to clarify that the item number seventy-six there are, um, uh, registered speaker, so that is off of the exclusion?
Yes, that's excluded from the consent agenda.
Yeah, I mean consent agenda, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other exclusions, notes, disclosures, recusals? Alder Lemmer.
Thank you. If this isn't the right time for this, I apologize because it's not related to the consent agenda for item number four, the, um, appeal, I just wanted to announce that I did attend Edgewood High School and Edgewood College and it will not impact how I vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. This is the correct time for those disclosures and, and recusals. Are there any additional disclosures, recusals, exclusions, notes? Alder Harrington McKinney.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I wanted to disclose that, um, I was edgen instructor at Edgewood College, uh, but that will not influence my vote.
Thank you, Alder Harrington McKinney. Any additional disclosures, recusals, exclusions, or notes for tonight's consent agenda? Okay, so hearing none, then just one more time, the items requested for exclusion are forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty-two, seventy-six, seventy-seven, and eighty-three. I'll also note, and I believe that you all have this list in your email, that we have registrants on, um, items fifty-one, one registrant in support available to answer questions. Sixty-four, one registrant in support available to answer questions. Sixty-nine, three registrants in support, eight opposed. And seventy-three, one registrant in support. Um, and so if you had any questions for those registrants, now would be the time. Uh, Alder Foster.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify, I think you mentioned forty-nine as being on the exclusion list. I'm, I'm not sure if somebody requested it, I think the recommendation there was to refer to January.
Thank you, Alder. It was on the exclusion list at your request, so if you're comfortable with the referral to January fifth, we will remove it and leave it on the consent agenda.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alright, so then, um, to clarify. Um, item forty-nine will not be taken up on the exclusion list, it will be included as part of the consent agenda and the motion is refer to the January fifth meeting. So the exclusion list is forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, fifty-two, seventy-six, seventy-seven, and eighty-three. I'm not seeing any requests, uh, for the registrants on the consent agenda. So Alder Carter, uh, motion?
Move adoption.
Alder Bedar.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda with those recommendations. Are there any objections to recording unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda? Seeing no objections, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda and we'll thank staff who are here for those items. Um, and then, uh, I would like to discuss our order of business tonight. Um, is there, uh, so item number four, we have approximately sixty registrants. Um, I, I would like to request unanimous consent that we defer taking up item number four. Um, that we deal with the rest of the public hearing items. Um, that we then take up item number seventy-six. Then we go to item number four and then we continue with the rest of the consent agenda, and I believe that Alder Verveer would like to amend that request.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I ask unanimous consent that we take up agenda item number eighty-three. A resolution supporting and directing implementation of the City of Madison inclusive workplace policy at this time for purposes of a brief staff presentation.
Alright, so Alder Verveer, just to be clear, you'd like to take up item eighty-three before the public hearings?
That's correct, Mayor, with the, my colleagues indulgence and the indulgence of any registrants.
Thank you, Alder Verveer. So the, the proposal at this time is to take up item eighty-three, to move into our public hearings, to take up item seventy-six, to take up item four, and then to continue with the exclusions from the consent agenda, uh, which would be forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, fifty-two, seventy-seven. Is there any objection to proceeding in that order? Uh, Alder Hennick.
Yes, I would, I would like to take up item four first. I, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with eighty-three coming before, but I would like to take up item four.
Alright, so can I have a motion, Alder Verveer, uh, for the order that I proposed?
Still.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So it's moved and seconded to go in that order. Alder Hennick, um, objects, so we'll have a vote. Is there any further discussion on the order of business? Seeing no further discussion, um, we'll call the roll. All those in favor of the, of the order being eighty-three, public hearings, seventy-six, four, and then the remainder of the exclusions from the consent agenda. Aye, those opposed, no, as your name is called. I'm going to un, uh, try and unmute everyone and ask staff to please keep themselves muted and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alder Verveer.
Aye.
Alder Wahili.
Alder Wahili, you are unmuted.
Aye. Thank you. Vice President Abbas is excused. Alder Aboris.
You swing back to me, please.
Yep. Balday.
Um, yeah, do an aye.
Pidar.
Aye.
President Carter.
Aye.
Evers.
Aye.
Right, ready?
Foster.
Aye.
Furman.
Aye.
Harrington McKinney.
Aye.
Uh, Heck.
Aye.
Hennick.
No.
Campbell.
Aye.
Lemmer.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Preste Jacamo.
Aye.
Rummel.
Aye.
Skidmore.
No.
Tierney.
Aye.
Alder Alboris.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, it's seventeen ayes and two noes and one excused.
Thank you. With seventeen ayes, that, that order of business passes. I'm going to mute you all again. And we will proceed to item, uh, eighty-three. Alder Verveer.
Thank you, Mayor. I move adoption of the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt item eighty-three. I believe we have a presentation from staff.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I would like to just quickly introduce the two, uh, members of our team that will be making the brief presentation. They are Gabriella Arteaga, uh, Building Inspection Division, and Erin Hilson of the Human Resources Department.
Thank you. Gabriella and Erin.
Thank you so much. Um, we just have a very brief overview that we're here to provide for you. Um, answer any questions that you have, um, and ask for your support for work that was done to develop a policy and resources necessary to support the significant changes that we're working to achieve in our workplace culture.
Hi, so as many of you know, um, in two thousand nineteen, the Multicultural Affairs Committee and the Women's Initiatives Committee completed an employee survey. So this is what came out of that survey. Um, the survey highlighted several ways that we're falling short of our vision to be a workplace that's inclusive of employees of all genders. Um, specifically, the survey found that half of transgender respondents and nearly two-thirds of non-binary respondents hid or downplayed aspects of their identity to avoid harassment or unfair treatment at work. This data is not surprising. It follows national trends that demonstrate the significant harm that transgender, non-binary, and gender non-conforming folks experience in a variety of situations. People of color, especially back trans women, are, um, experience this harm at disproportionate rates.
So this quote is from one of our employees and, um, it shows how necessary this policy and these changes are. The things that we do and say at work signal who, who belongs and who doesn't belong in our workplaces. Some of them are subtle and unintentional. For example, many of us have been brought up to say, sir, and ma'am, to be respectful. But that habit puts us in a position of habitually making assumptions about people's gender.
And the thing is, we don't expect everyone to get everything right all the time, right? You know, I, I don't. That's partly why this APM is so welcome. It provides us all with the guidance and tools that we need to be better coworkers, um, better employees, better employers. We're all at different stages, but what's important is that we all commit to learning and growing and avoiding, avoiding othering other people.
So to help address these issues, a team of employees from across the city, um, a variety of different departments came together to develop a policy and resources. The purpose is to ensure inclusion of employees of all genders, create safe processes for transitioning in the workplace, prevent stigmatization, and to create a safe and productive work environment.
The APM itself has guidance on the responsibilities of, uh, the city department, division heads, and individual employees. There's also a resource guide with more information for transgender, gender non-conforming, and non-binary employees, for supervisors, and for supportive colleagues. And there's a language style guide for, um, organizational developmental and individual levels. The policy, the resources, and this resolution are a map for us to follow. An opportunity to create workplaces that welcome everyone and a call for collaboration and continuous improvement. At its core, this policy calls on us to center the necessary inclusion of, um, you know, our gender queer employees. We are proud of how this inclusive workplace APM came together. Um, in large part because trans and gender queer employees were full participants at every step of the process. So if we start off with the premise that all City of Madison employees deserve to be seen, valued, and respected, this policy becomes a tool to get us closer to that goal. And I, you know, we don't want it to stop with employees. This extends to our community members as well.
Yeah. So we appreciate your support in this, um, and for your help in making sure we fulfill our collective responsibilities to build, um, an understanding of what it means to have an inclusive work environment. And in particular, what this environment actually feels like for transgender, non-binary, and gender non-conforming employees. Um, that we all collectively share responsibility to read, understand the policy, the resource guide, the language style guide. And then that we pass this resolution to provide support and guidance for implementation, um, of needed change. We really appreciate your, um, time and consideration, um, for this item.
Thank you, uh, Gabriella and Erin both. Appreciate your work and the work of the entire team. I was proud to sign this APM. Um, Alder Verveer, did you have additional comment?
I did, uh, very quickly here, Mayor. I, I too very much want to thank Gabriella and Erin, not only for their presentation this evening on this vital topic, but also their approximately twenty-five colleagues. Uh, they're, as you heard, a cross-section across all departments and divisions of our city workplaces, uh, who worked on these different, uh, staff teams, uh, as part of this important initiative over the last couple of years. So it, when you think about it, it really is impressive, a call went out to all city employees, uh, if they were interested in working on this initiative, uh, led by the HR department. And again, approximately twenty-five employees have been fully engaged in this work for quite some time. I too want to thank you, Mayor, of course, for your full-fledged support of this initiative and as you sta- just stated, signing the administrative procedure memorandum, uh, very recently. Uh, I want to, um, point out to my colleagues that it was twenty years ago that the common council proudly, and we were one of the first communities, one of the first municipalities in the country, uh, that included gender identity as a protected class. So that was twenty years ago now that we did that. Uh, and a lot of progress has been made since then. But this work is so critical, uh, as you heard from the brief presentation. Uh, the, it's so important that, that all of us as, as alders, as, as public officials and all of our employees that we work with have a willingness to learn new ways. Uh, something as simple as pronouns is just so important, uh, to, uh, supporting, uh, uh, inclusive workplace. So as it relates to, to transgender, uh, gender non-conforming, non-binary employees, our, uh, hopefully, unanimous support tonight of not only their, their, um, importance, uh, in our workplaces, uh, but also acknowledging the important work of all these, uh, employees that have worked so hard on this initiative. Uh, acknowledging the mayor's, uh, um, signing of the APM recently through the adoptionist resolution and then even more importantly, directing implementation of the city's inclusive workplace policy by adopting this resolution, I think is very important. Lastly, let me, uh, draw my colleagues' attention to the fact that there are three, uh, attachments to this legislature item, uh, that, that you can, um, read at your leisure. I would encourage you to do so. They were mentioned by Gabriella during the presentation, but again, it's the actual APM, two dash fifty-two, um, inclusive workplace, uh, language, the resource guide, and the language style guide. So I encourage my colleagues to, to review those, uh, and, and, uh, that important work that, that, uh, was done to create those, those documents. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder Verveer. Are there questions for staff or is there additional discussion?
I have questions for staff.
President Carter.
Yeah, uh, so either Gabriella or Erin, is this gonna be part of onboarding or an annual training refresher?
Um, so we don't, we have a training strategy that we're currently, um, we're currently putting together. I, I think the biggest thing will be not, you know, like, I don't remember who said it, but, um, the revolution won't be diversity trainings, right? I think, I think it's the same thing here. I think it's a, we have to look at systems too. Um, but we will have trainings and definitely, if, if I got my way onboarding, um, there'd be, uh, there'd be onboarding, like, with APM three dash five, which they're also, um, looking at how to, how to change up the training for that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Any other questions or discussion? Right, seeing none. Um, well, thank you again, Gabriella and Erin, and, oh, Alder Wahili.
Thank you, Mayor. Will there be any, uh, implemented in the future, this?
Let's see, um, is it? Erin, I, did you catch that question?
I did not. I'm sorry, I got booted briefly.
Was, will there be non-gender bathroom signs to accommodate those?
Yeah, so this does include direction to the Engineering Division, who we've been working with quite a bit to ensure that we can update our facilities and get signage updated. There is not funding that was included thus far for that signage effort, and so if Engineering is unable to accomplish that without that funding, I think there may be a request made to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Alder, I would add that I am impatient to make that change, both in terms of the current signage and in terms of establishing a policy on future construction. So I think we will hopefully see that happen in the near future. Alder, hearing to McKinney.
Madam Mayor, you can, I can lower my hand because I was going to say that I was really impatient to wait. That should be a priority. If we're going to talk about it, we should be about it. And so that was why my hand was raised. So thank you for saying that that will be, not when, but it will be, and to set it up so that we can have a definitive support it, just not talk about it, but support it. Thank you.
I wholeheartedly agree, Alder. All right, any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of item 83? Seeing no objection, we're recording unanimous vote in favor of item 83, and thank you again to staff for being here to present. All right, so that will bring us to our public hearings. Give me a moment to shuffle the papers here. And as previously noted, we are starting our public hearings with item five. We'll come back to item number four. So on item number five, which is Legisstar 61686, we'll open a public hearing on the appeal of the Plan Commission action on demolition permit for 126 Langdon Street. On item number five, we have no registrants. We'll close that public hearing. President Carter. President Carter, you're muted. There you go.
Thank you. Move to place on file without prejudice.
Alder Bedar?
Second.
Moved and seconded to place on file without prejudice. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote? Seeing none, that item is placed on file without prejudice. Item number six is Legisstar 60914, open a public hearing on creating sections of the MGO to change zoning at property in the 4,000 to 4,150 Packers Avenue and 4,201 North Sherman Ave. We have, excuse me a minute. We have one registrant on item six, Allison Lindsay-Morris of Comanche Way. Neither supporting nor opposing, not wishing to speak. Are there any questions for our registrant? Seeing none, we'll recess the public hearing. President Carter.
Move to re-refer to the Plan Commission of December 14th and Common Council for January 5th.
Second.
Moved and seconded to re-refer. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of re-referral? Seeing none, that item is re-referred. That brings us to item number seven, which is Legisstar 61929, open a public hearing on the second substitute amending sections of the MGO to create new use of electric vehicle charging facility, et cetera. We have one registrant, Nick Davies of Richard Street, in support, not wishing to speak. Are there any questions for our registrant? Seeing none, we'll recess that public hearing. President Carter.
Move adoption with conditions.
President Carter, I believe the motion is to refer to the January 5th Council meeting.
Okay, refer to January 5th Council meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded to refer. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of referral? Seeing none, that item is referred. That will take us to item number eight, which is Legisstar 61589, open a public hearing amending the City of Madison official map to establish mapped reservations for future streets in the area generally located north of Milwaukee Street between North Fair Oaks and West Corporate Drive. We have no registrants on item number eight, so we'll recess the public hearing. President Carter.
Re-refer to January 5th.
Alder Bedar?
Second.
Moved and seconded to re-refer to January 5th. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of re-referral? Seeing none, item eight is re-referred. And take us to item nine, Legisstar 62949, open a public hearing on a new license at Wonder State Coffee. We have one registrant, Kyle Beach of West Main, in support, not wishing to speak. Are there any questions for our registrant? Seeing none, we'll close that public hearing. President Carter.
Move to grant.
Second.
Moved and seconded to grant. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of granting? Seeing no objection, the item is granted. Take us to item number 10, Legisstar 62950, open a public hearing on a new license at Madison Food Mart. We have no registrants on item 10. We will close the public hearing. President Carter.
Move to grant, item 10.
Second.
Moved and seconded to grant. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, item 10 is granted. Item 11 is Legisstar 62951, we'll open a public hearing on a new license at Hilton Garden Inn Madison. We have two registrants, or, excuse me, we have one registrant, Michael Lures of Kelly Street, who is in support and available to answer questions representing the Hilton Garden Inn of Madison. Are there any questions for our registrant? Seeing none, we'll close that public hearing. President Carter.
Move number 11 to grant.
Second.
Moved and seconded to grant. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, that item is granted. And take us to item number 12, Legisstar 62952, we'll open a public hearing on a new license at Mini Mart. We have no registrants on item 12. We will close that public hearing. President Carter.
Move item 12 to place on file without prejudice.
Second.
Moved and seconded to place on file without prejudice. Alder Skidmore.
Yes, the Alder of the district has asked if I would move to refer this back to ALRC for further discussion.
There's a motion to refer back to ALRC. Is there a second? Second. Moved and seconded to refer back to ALRC. Are there questions or discussion? Seeing none. Alder Skidmore?
Yes, I just want to say I was not able to be at that meeting because of a West Side conversation that we had. I was not able to be there, but I heard that there was some possible confusion. I will defer to the Alder of the district if she has further comments.
I do not have further comments. I think that's fine, that it goes back to the ALRC.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Skidmore, and President Carter. So the motion is to re-refer to the ALRC. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of re-referral? Seeing no objection, that item is re-referred. Takes us to item number 13, Legisstar 62953, we'll open a public hearing on a new license at Quick Trip 155. We have no registrants. We will close that public hearing. President Carter.
Move item 13 to grant with conditions.
Second.
Moved and seconded to grant with conditions. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, that item is granted with conditions. Item 14 is Legisstar 62954, we'll open a public hearing on a new license at Quick Trip 1511. We have no registrants on item 14. We will close that public hearing. President Carter.
Move item 14 to grant with conditions.
Second.
Moved and seconded to grant item 14 with conditions. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, that item is granted. And we'll move on to item 15, which is Legisstar 62955, we'll open a public hearing on a new license at Quick Trip 1513. We have no registrants. Close that public hearing. President Carter.
Move item 15 to grant with conditions.
Second.
Moved and seconded to grant with conditions. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, that item is granted with conditions. That brings us to item 16, Legisstar 62956, which is a, so we'll open a public hearing on a new license at Quick Trip 1514. We have one registrant, Ellen Taylor Powell of Terry Place, in opposition, wishing to speak. Is Ellen Taylor Powell with us?
Yes, Ellen, there should be a prompt on your screen asking to be unmuted. Ellen, there should be a prompt on your screen asking you to be unmuted.
You may have to search for it if you have multiple windows open. Ellen, we're doing everything we can on our side to unmute you, so you need to find the button that asks to unmute yourself.
Doesn't look like they're responding. May have stepped away.
All right, well, Ellen, if you're within the sound of our voice, you should feel free to email the council at allalders@cityofmadison.com with your testimony to get it into the record, or we'll give you one more chance to unmute yourself and give your testimony now. All right, well, without objection, then, we'll move on and close that public hearing. President Carter.
Move to grant with conditions.
Second.
Moved and seconded to grant. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, that item is granted. Item 17 is Legisstar 62957, we'll open a public hearing on a new license at Stop and Go 1515. We have no registrants. We'll recess that public hearing. President Carter.
Recommend to re-refer.
Second.
Moved and seconded to re-refer. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, that item is re-referred. Item 18 is Legisstar 62958, we'll open a public hearing on a new license at Stop and Go 1522. No registrants on item 18. We'll close that public hearing. President Carter.
Move to grant.
Second.
Moved and seconded to grant. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, that item is granted. Item 19 is Legisstar 62959, we'll open a public hearing on a new license at Stop and Go 1524. We have no registrants. We will close that public hearing. President Carter.
Move 19 to grant with conditions.
Second.
Moved and seconded to grant with conditions. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, that item is granted. Bring us back to the report of the Plan Commission and Legisstar 62174, open a public hearing on a substitute creating sections of the MGO to rezone properties at 3614 through 3700 Milwaukee Street and 102 to 122 West Corporate Drive. Open that public hearing. We have no registrants. We'll recess that public hearing. President Carter.
Move to refer to the January 5th, 2021 Common Council meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded to refer. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of referral? Seeing no objection, that item is referred. On to item number 21, which is Legisstar 62640, we'll open a public hearing on creating sections of the MGO to amend a planned development district at 7601 Mineral Point Road. We have two registrants, Sean O'Brien of Sawtooth Drive in Fitchburg in support, available to answer questions, and Kevin Burrow of University Ave in support, available to answer questions, representing Northam Bruce Architects. Are there questions for either of our registrants? Seeing no questions, we will close the public hearing on item 21. President Carter.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adoption? Seeing none, that item is adopted. That brings us to item number 22, Legisstar 62668, we'll open a public hearing on amending sections of the MGO to allow front yard setbacks for planned multi-use sites in the Commercial Center District to be measured from interior private access roads. Open that public hearing. We have no registrants. We'll close that public hearing. President Carter.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of adoption? Seeing none, that item is adopted, and that concludes our public hearings. So we will move on then to item number 76. I'll give you all a moment to get there while I get to our registrants list. All right, so we have quite a few registrants on this item, starting with Amy Owen. You know what, let's get a motion on the table. President Carter.
Move to adopt.
The second substitute.
The second substitute?
Yes.
Second.
So the move, the motion is to adopt the second substitute. We'll move to public comment, starting with Amy Owen of Buena Vista Street, in support, to be followed by Jake Winkler.
Thank you for the opportunity to provide feedback on this proposed ban on facial recognition technology. I think that this ban is the right choice for our city, and that supporting it is aligned with the goal of ending our community's racial disparities in arrests and incarceration. These technologies have pretty well-established and serious flaws in their capacity to accurately identify black and brown faces. I'm sure you'll hear a lot of testimony about that tonight, especially for women. And we just don't need to be using tools that are this unreliable in our city. So specifically- So specifically, I ask that you vote no on the alternate proposed ordinance and yes on the second substitute ordinance that the four authors of the original proposal submitted, allowing some usage in cases of child trafficking and missing children. So please allow this proposal to remain strong and meaningful. It's pretty obvious that too many loopholes, especially if they are loosely worded, would render the proposal useless in its intent to protect our residents from the potentially and very harmful results of these poorly functioning tools. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Jake Winkler of Barton Road in support, to be followed by Larissa Joanna.
Thanks for the time. As I said in my email to the Alders and the mayor, the first question these things is, will this tool make things better or worse? When this came up in committee, an industry representative, really a lobbyist, talked about how the top algorithms have no bias. He cited NIST report to back that up. That report says that over 90% of the algorithms that the National Board tested did have bias. So he's really referring to the top 5% or 7%-ish. And even those had problems if you... At certain error levels and in certain demographics. Those links are in the email that I sent over. I will point out one other thing, that in any process like this, the algorithm is one piece of the puzzle, the other two being the application that actually uses it, the process around it, as well as the data that is being fed. So what kind of pictures are we going to have available to... If we have like some surveillance video that has a face, what are we going to compare that against? What database would MPD have available to cross-reference? Usually that's people that already have contact with the criminal justice system or social services. So it's like, it's going to be skewed to finding people within that population already. There's just a lot of process problems, as well as like, how high quality of an algorithm would we even get if this were implemented? And honestly, the technology hasn't been demonstrated to be without bias. And I don't think that in the climate where we're trying to establish trust between community and the police department, that another tool can just come in and muddy the water, and then the police department can just wave their hands at the tool and say, it's the tool's fault. So please support the second alternate. It accounts for the things that MPD is already doing. We've heard some complaints around it needs to support child sex trafficking work, and that's now been accounted for in the second alternate. So please support that. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Larissa Joanna of Blair Street in support, to be followed by Jeremy Ryan.
Mayor, there's no one by that name in the list.
Right. So Jeremy Ryan of Audana in support, to be followed by Kim Richmond.
Yeah. I would like to start out by requesting that video be allowed. I know several people emailed for the accommodation. I have plenty of time to stop, so I'd like to request that video be allowed for people who are hard of hearing to participate in this.
Mr. Ryan, the council office has not made us aware of any requests for accommodation for this meeting.
What email do they need to email? Because they emailed the Alders at City of Madison.
Mr. Ryan, every agenda has the instructions on how to request accommodations for each meeting.
But then, okay, but they emailed that. So, I mean, I get it. You're salty, salty, Satya. Just upset you stole my idea from 2009 for Bus Rapid Transit. But either way, I'll commend you for that later. Oh, and by the way, you didn't need to call the police on me, Satya. I'm not...
Mr. Ryan, do you wish to testify on the item before us or not?
Oh, yeah, salty, Satya, I do. Let's go back to 9/11, a time when hopefully Satya wasn't so salty. And one thing we saw in our nation, one very good thing, is we all came together. But one very bad thing that happened is we all used national security to sign away pretty much all of our rights. And that mentality still continues to this day. And so we have to determine the efficacy of a certain model, and we have to determine that against the public interest. And I don't think that anything less restrictive to the police than... Anything less restrictive to the police than this second substitute ordinance is appropriate. And it creates massive issues with the police department that statistically is horrible for minorities to expect them not to use this technology in a way that profiles to use this technology against protesters. I know you'd like that, Satya. You called the police on me, but to use it in those sorts of ways. And so if we're going to allow this, it absolutely has to be the second proposal. And this has to be limited to very particular situations in a very particular format. And with that, I will yield my time and ask you all to check your goddamn emails.
Thank you. Alder Hennig McKinnney.
Madam Mayor, I just want to ask a point of procedure. I know that we have a Sergeant of Arms within our council. Is there any Sergeant of Arms in terms of public comment? Is that able to say what they say and be disrespectful in any way? This is just... I'm seeking that information.
Alder Hennig McKinnney, it's an interesting question with a virtual meeting. Usually the Sergeant of Arms's job is to help keep order at a physical meeting. I certainly think we could translate that into the virtual world. It's perhaps a slightly different set of duties, but certainly, I think that would be appropriate.
Okay. That would be my request, that we look into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Hennig McKinnney. All right. Continuing with public comment, Kim Richmond of Droster Road in opposition, to be followed by Kayla Dubois.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. We don't always agree, but I respect your seat. Tonight, I'm speaking in opposition to the proposed overreaching ban on facial recognition technology. I'm against a ban in any way, shape, or form, because even a ban with exemptions is just a foot in the door for future total ban. It's been a fluid situation here, so to the best of my knowledge, also, please vote for version four alternate sponsored by Alder Hennig. Let's take politics and law enforcement hatred out of this proposal and do the right thing for the citizens of Madison. The same people who support this proposed ban are against police wearing body cams, but a few years ago, they demanded body cams. Please inform us. What are you afraid of? Technology is expanding, evolving, and improving at an explosive rate. Worldwide, FRT is the most modern technology in solving crimes, finding missing children, senior citizens, and Alzheimer's patients. In addition, FRT has been used to apprehend terrorists, rapist killers, and other dangerous criminals. Identifying criminals started simply with a photo and a name, then ink-based fingerprints, then live-scanned fingerprints, and now DNA, biometrics, and facial recognition technology. This technology is not going away. It's a matter of time... I'm sorry. It's a matter of what communities take advantage of it to make their residents more safe. Currently, MPD uses this cutting-edge technology to locate and rescue child victims of sex trafficking, child pornography, and other internet crimes against them. There are many other important ways this technology could be used, such as identifying deceased persons when other means are lacking, identifying mentally disabled people who are unable to identify themselves, and in the case of serious felony-level crimes for which there is an unidentified... Or I'm sorry, an identified suspect. The limited language of this proposed ban would tie the hands of MPD at tracking down our most vulnerable victims and lose the ability to generate tips on confirmed suspects. One concern is it could limit MPD from initiating a third-party facial recognition technology involvement if that request does not come from someone outside of MPD. If they have a strong lead, it would be a disaster to pass up that technology, simply because an outside request doesn't make the initiation, or to even be able to mention it to parents of a child victim, for example. In the case of an active shooter, imminent threat, mass casualty event, or even serious felonies, this technology could be vital. This ban is too limiting and a real threat to public safety. Public safety of every Madison resident should be the number-one issue of the mayor and the common council. If you are not doing that, you are not doing your job. I would like to quote the Security Industry Association regarding targeted public policy. Addressing public concerns about current and potential applications of this technology can be fully accomplished through policies promoting transparency, proper procedures, and thorough oversight, which allows the approach to facial recognition technology...
Time.
We only have three minutes?
Yes, it's only three minutes because this is not a public hearing item. But thank you for your testimony. I'm informed that Larissa Joanna is in fact here. Can we find her? While we go on to Kayla Dubois of Sun Prairie in opposition, and then we'll either go to Larissa or to Zachary Gold.
Yes, good evening. My name is Kayla Dubois. I have been a social worker in Child Protective Services for the past 10 years, and I'm the director of a local nonprofit that works with individuals exploited through the commercial sex industry here in Madison, including children and adults that are victims of sex trafficking. The detectives at MPD are valuable partners in our work, and the technology they utilize to identify and track the movement of trafficking victims is absolutely essential to both locating victims and gathering evidence in order to prosecute perpetrators. This is not theoretical. I have been involved personally in cases where children are missing and being sold for sex day in and day out, and this is the only way we have been able to find them. My concern is that this ban would have unintended consequences in taking away an important investigative tool from law enforcement. I understand it's not the intention of the authors of this proposal to keep law enforcement from being able to identify and locate victims, and I think it's critical that they also be permitted to use this technology to gather evidence and identify perpetrators as well. There are multiple versions of exemptions being discussed tonight, but these didn't come out until after 5:00 p.m., which frankly is not sufficient time for this to be considered with the care it deserves, including enough time for the public to consider these proposals and speak to them. If a vote is absolutely going to take place tonight, I would strongly advocate for version four. This version allows for the critical exemptions of allowing law enforcement to utilize FRT in cases of missing and exploited children, missing adults, human trafficking, child sexual abuse, and child pornography, and allows them to use information to identify suspects of a serious felony who pose a significant risk to public safety or to identify a deceased individual. I think it's absolutely critical that the language here is clear and specific in allowing law enforcement to continue conducting the essential and honorable work they do in locating missing and trafficked children and adults, and allowing them to identify perpetrators of the most egregious crimes that put the safety of our community's most vulnerable citizens at risk. This is the only version that is clear and specific on these items, and which I... For which reason, I strongly urge you to support version four. Thank you.
Mayor, Larissa is here now.
All right. So we'll go to Larissa Joanna of Blair Street in support. Larissa, can you hear us?
There should be a prompt on your screen, Larissa, asking to be unmuted.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I am here tonight to urge you to support the ban, the ban on facial recognition, because it's really important to... That you listen to the voices that are more... The more vulnerable, the more affected by these things. I am here also to let you know again that this is something that specifically attacks immigrants in the undocumented community that should be protected and should be feeling safe, as we have seen in different states like Georgia, North Carolina, New York, and I can go on and on. They have been partnering with agencies like the DMV to try to attack working-class people who doesn't even have a criminal record. We need to do... We need to do the right thing. We need to make sure that we're protecting the most vulnerable. We need to make sure that we're listening to the voices that really matter. I hear a lot about save the children, but ain't nobody talking about saving the children in cages at the border that are being caged out by ICE. So please get your priorities straight. I urge you to vote no on the alternate proposed by Alder Hennig. Campbell, Prestia, Evers, Bervier, Foster, and Head. So please protect those... The community that most need it right now, that is screaming out in the street, that is screaming that we need some type of justice. These things are not and nowhere helpful. Think about moving funds to the community that really will stop the crimes and that will help build community and build people and build opportunities for our community so that we can keep us safe and so that we can continue to work together towards democracy. Because we don't have nothing... Nothing close to democracy at this moment, especially when our voices are not being heard, especially when our voices are not being considered. I urge you to do your job tonight. I urge you to do the right thing, to stand on the right side of the history, and to continue to support all of the community that is really screaming for help out here. Because this is ridiculous that we are even arguing about basic human rights that will be violated. So it is ridiculous that we're even having this argument or a conversation like this when it's common sense. We need to stop playing those political games and make sure we're protecting, serving the community that elected you. So thank you so much. I yield my time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Zachary Gold of Blair Street in support, to be followed by Dan Fitch.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, your volume's a little low, but we can hear you.
I'm going to do my best. Awesome. So I guess, first of all, thank you for allowing me to speak on this issue. I would like to begin, I guess, by saying that I'm not an expert on facial recognition technology, but I was fortunate enough to study with Michael Dawson at the University of Chicago and work with Corey Doctoroff, the founder of the Electronic Frontier Foundation, which is a nonprofit focusing on internet policy. I guess for background, facial recognition is definitely a developing field within the domain of machine learning. Machine learning is a process of training computers on large data sets, sometimes in excess of millions of samples. The large data sample size presents two real issues. First, it's impossible for humans to fully oversee the process. And second, because of the complexity that arises from basically making a computer program itself, it's impossible for a human to look into that code and evaluate the logic behind why the machine might have matched two images together. There are, of course, as I'm sure other people will say, and people have already said, numerous examples of machine learning failing. Last month, I know, there was a supercar that someone trained to participate in a track race that locked itself into a hard left turn and continuous acceleration and ignored all of its override commands. And this was kind of a problem with the code. And last year, I think, 23andMe updated all of their algorithms, which are intended to tell people, you know, where their ancestors are from. But I think as they get a larger and larger sample size, it turns out that their previous guesses were wrong. So there are these people who have like these Nordic tattoos, and it turns out that they're actually from Poland and things like that, because people get very convinced by the prospect that machine learning is always right. These anecdotes, to me, are kind of funny, but I think they really indicate that machine learning does have certain inherent limitations, and that these limitations are going to be amplified by the data set that's used. As other speakers have said, the data sets used by a lot of the facial recognition companies that we would likely partner with are going to be overwhelmingly white. And I think that it's important to note that because of this, the algorithm is going to be very bad at identifying people who are not white, which results generally in a large number of false positive matches. If I were going to be kind of agnostic to the question of how should I feel about this as a citizen, I would say, yeah, sure. Not now, maybe. The City of Madison should look into this, but at some point in the future, when the technology is better. But I think it's not responsible of me to be agnostic to those considerations. I think as a citizen of the United States, there is a responsibility to be civic-minded and frankly, being somewhat greedy when it comes to talk about defense of individual liberties. And I think because of that, I have to support this item, which I believe...
Time.
All right.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Dan Fitch of Corum Street in support, to be followed by Aditha Pugazendi.
Howdy. Acting Chief Wall in the MPD referred to Georgetown Law's Center on Privacy and Technology Recommendations from 2016 in the recent PSRC meeting. But let's look at what the same people say now. Quote, "We now believe that state, local, and federal government should place a moratorium on police use of face recognition. We also believe that jurisdictions that move to ban the technology outright are amply justified to do so," end quote. I feel like we can probably revisit this, when half our Dane County jail is not full of black people, and when half our misdemeanors are not charged against black people. We can then say, maybe facial technology is ready to go. Previous people have talked about sex trafficking, but the MPD gave us no solid evidence of child victim cases actually aided by this technology. Facial recognition technology is biased. It works worse with younger kids, non-males, and darker skin. Don't listen to security industry lobbyists. Don't water down this ban. Please pass it as originally intended. Thank you. I yield my time. Don't listen to security industry lobbyists. Don't water down this ban. Please pass it as originally intended. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. Next registrant is Aditya Pugazendi of High Street in support to be followed by Mike Thompson.
Hi, City Council. I'm here to support the proposed second substitute and encourage you to vote for that. And I know a lot of other people are also here in support of that and have made a lot of excellent points. So I just want to add on something I don't think has been discussed as much, which is that I think that even the fact that, or the alleged fact that facial recognition technology is vital for locating victims of child sex trafficking is something that has not really been proven either. You know, it's something that's been pushed a lot if you look around at media, especially ones that are and public relations releases from companies that provide facial recognition technology. Because obviously, that's not, that's something that everyone is, they're opposed to. And everyone wants to use every possible tool to, you know, help stop child sex trafficking. But that also means that it can be used or to exploit and exploited for pushing on other unpopular solutions like facial recognition technology, even when it hasn't been conclusively demonstrated to have done so. Facial, or studies of facial recognition technology have shown that not only are they biased or prone to misidentifying minority populations, that's also true for children, obviously grow quickly and who's faced change over time. So even in the cases where facial recognition technology is supposed to be most important, it's being used on populations that have been shown to be more prone to misidentification. So I believe that really we should be closing a full stop on facial recognition technology altogether. But as it stands, I believe we should be passing the second substitute amendment, which, or the second substitute, which allows it, as it's being currently used, but bans it from any expansion. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Mike Thompson of Raymond Road in opposition to be followed by Gary Halverson.
Good evening, Mayor and Alders. I'm opposed to Agenda Item 76, which would ban MPD from using face recognition technology. We are enduring a wave of violent destructive crime and our police department is more strained than ever after you so foolishly voted last month to cut the number of police officers. MPD, especially now, desperately needs the most modern and efficient tools available to quickly identify and arrest criminal suspects. And I want you to allow our police officers to have these tools. Just last week, a neighbor, a 75-year-old granny, and who's more vulnerable than that? Had her car stolen as she walked into a Prairie Road food pantry to make a donation. I wonder if the thief even cared that the food his family or his friends' families could be eating later that night might be coming from this good-hearted woman that he had ripped off. I wonder too if any Alders or someone from the mayor's office went to Prairie Road to comfort the victim and apologized for weakening our police department and allowing these criminals to run wild. Alders, I want our police department to have face recognition technology so that if they get a video of the thief stealing granny's car on Prairie Road, they can use that technology to try and identify and arrest the criminal so that he can't victimize anyone else in our community. Alders who vote to ban face recognition technology are voting to subject us to increased risk of being victimized by criminals. Please, don't do that. Support us. Help us. Vote against Item 76. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Gary Halverson of Glacier Hill Drive in opposition to be followed by Quinn Crossley.
There's no one by that name in the list, but Quinn is here.
Okay, so then Quinn Crossley of Bedford Street to be followed by Megan Spielbauer.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Alright, yeah, it's me, Quinn Crossley of Bedford Street. Caught me a little off guard going earlier. Yeah, I really do support the ban on facial recognition. You know, we've had a couple of people come onto this call and talk about safety and rising crime in Madison. And as someone who lives in downtown Madison, I feel most safe when we're diverting funds towards the communities who actually need them most. For me, knowing that the police are surveilling me more as a minority and surveilling people of color more makes me feel less safe in Madison, right? If we really care about crime, then we need to be doing things to address the root causes of crime rather than further policing the communities who have been like pushed into poverty and other marginalizations because of the way that we're treating them right now through our policies. So please ban this technology. Please approve the second substitute, not the alternate. We need a strong ban. Yeah, also just want to mention that a lot of studies have found that facial recognition is super biased. And actually, in many cases, is less accurate than using humans to look at the footage and analyze it. So all of these arguments about why the police need it kind of fall flat when you actually look at the data. I've been a tech worker for 10 years. I've done a lot of work specifically with law enforcement and the Department of Defense. As somebody who has been in the room and seen those conversations happen about emerging technology, I can personally attest that the people developing this stuff do not have citizens' best interests at heart. And I think we need to follow the lead of other cities who actually care about their people who are banning this. If you take a look at San Francisco, Portland, other places are taking a stand against this for a very good reason. I would encourage Madison to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Next registrant is Megan Spielbauer of Carroll Street in support to be followed by Barbara Meyer.
Megan is not in the list, but Barbara is here.
So then Barbara Meyer of Wedgewood Way in opposition to be followed by Robert Meyer.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. We're so fortunate to have an outstanding police department and to do everything in our power to assist it in protecting our community. Facial recognition technology can be used to identify victims of sex trafficking, but it can also be used to assure peaceful demonstrations, which I fully support, and discourage the kind of looting and vandalism I witnessed on live TV when state street businesses were victimized. Thank you for your support in making our city a safer place to live and let live. I'm not afraid of facial technology and recognition. And I don't think others should be either. If you're not participating in criminal activity, then you have no problem. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Next is Robert Meyer of Wedgewood Way in opposition to be followed by Tyson Vitale.
Hello, am I live?
Yes.
Yes. My wife and I have enjoyed living in Madison since 1972. But recent actions by the city government are calling into question how much longer we would want to reside here. We see an inclination on the part of city government to follow very bad examples that have been sold elsewhere in terms of public safety and police technology. The most recent bad example that the city is considering is embodied in the ordinance being considered tonight to ban facial recognition. We have heard no sound arguments. You know, the arguments that are people are presenting are the usual arguments that yes, the police are racist, that maybe there are flaws in the technology. Those arguments don't stand up against, you know, real data showing the utility of this tool. So I think that it's time for the council to exercise common sense and see the value of this technology in helping the police to identify criminals who are in the process of committing crimes. And, you know, it just seems obvious to me that this is a technology that law-abiding citizens don't need to fear. Criminals do need to fear. The council has a choice. I yield my time.
Thank you. Next registrant is Tyson Vitale of Dell Drive in support to be followed by John Fons. Do we have Tyson?
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. I ask that you all support the substitute that's up, the second substitute, and specifically not the alternate that was put forth by Alder Henneck. You know, in this conversation, what people are talking about saying, well, this is a no-brainer. This is common sense. I really don't think that we're also not even really thinking or having the conversation of the broader context of the government, law enforcement. You know, having and using these technologies that we do not understand, we truly do not get the potential consequences on our freedoms, on our privacy, on increasing the racial disparities that are built into even the algorithms that are create, like that are behind these facial recognition systems or deep learning systems. This is a complicated and important issue that really needs to be well thought out. And having the police or law enforcement have access to facial recognition technology or these other newer technologies is just something that we should not at all be thinking about, especially at this juncture, at this point. And some comments of folks saying, you know, well, if you're not doing anything wrong, then, you know, what do you have to be afraid of? That's absurd. You have a lot to be afraid of. I mean, why not have the police, the government and anyone else see where you are at all times? See where you've been, see who you've been with? And hell, why not try to access based on some deep learning technology that they might get down the road? What mood you might be in? Or identify you as, let's say, a quote-unquote threat because of your whatever they identify. Again, like this is something we really need to take seriously. These advances in technology are going much faster than we can really quite digest what the potential, especially unintentional consequences are of these. And also the knowledge of how they will increase racial disparities and increase profile and how they don't work as well, quite frankly, for people of color. Literally, the algorithms do not work for facial recognition, the vast majority of them, well for people of color. You have phones, Samsung phones and other things that just a few years ago, literally like they would recognize people's faces in their photo apps or to unlock their phones, et cetera. And they literally would not realize or see black people because there was not enough people feeding into their algorithm to identify and properly identify black folks or folks with dark skin to properly identify those individuals. So there are broader consequences to these things. And a lot of the folks that I see in support of this, of course, are not the ones that would bear these consequences likely. And that's the problem. So I ask that you support the second alternate from the original authors. And yeah, thank you. I do have something that I just want to mention with some folks that I've heard that are advocating for these things and others on these calls. You know, if some of you folks are listening, especially if you are white folks, if you are white males, cis males especially, that are saying that you're advocating for these issues, going after our mayor and going after other people, please stop.
That's your time. Thank you. Our next registrant is John E. Fons of Tokay in opposition to be followed by Rachel Christman.
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing I want to do with all sincerity is wish you and the common council a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I want to make some comments about the procedures here. I think that the city would do well to revise its administrative filters on these Zoom meetings. I think it's distressing to not see other names or faces in the audience. I understand that would take some, again, some administrative adjustment. But names on a screen are not as persuasive or as evocative as people on a screen. And that should be allowed to the citizens who wish to speak. Last night, I attended a, by Zoom, the first meeting of your Public Citizens Oversight Committee of the Police Department. And I want to point out that eight of the 12 members of that committee who were present were black. That's 67%. You have a city in which the black population is 6.8%. So if you're looking for racial disparity, you better be careful that you don't step too far into the realm of subconscious bias, let's call it. You have by a factor of 10 overfreighted that Citizens Oversight Committee with a minority group. So I'd take that under advisement. I'm opposed to any ban on facial recognition technology in the hands of the Madison Police Department. I actually trust them. If I call them, I'm calling people I trust just the same as I would trust a doctor or a dentist or even a lawyer to represent me as a citizen and as a taxpayer against an unwanted influence. I think that if you ban facial recognition technology, there's an old saying, it's really good in the military. If you can't be right, be uniform. So I would encourage you to take those 25 people who were so active in drafting a sex policy for your city to then look into a ban on fingerprint technology and also DNA testing. I mean, one technology is as good as another. And if you want to hamstring your police department, you better keep at it. Because there's a lot of technology out there that interferes with people's privacy and their right to do wrong. Now, I don't want to yield the remainder of my time, but I would like to dedicate it to silent prayer for the city of Madison. This city's gonna need it.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Rachel Christman of Oregon, Wisconsin, in support to be followed by Tasha Jezdal.
I had to promote Rachel to a panelist. She's in the panelist list now.
While you're looking for Rachel, let's try Tasha Jezdal of Franklin Street in support. And then we'll try and come back for Rachel. And after that is Bonnie Rowe.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Yep, so I just want to reiterate that federal studies show that black and Asian people are 100 times more likely to be misidentified compared to white people using this technology. And as previously pointed out, it is extremely unreliable for the elderly, for darker skin-toned folks, for women and for children. So what is the point of using technology, spending taxpayer dollars on technology that is unreliable and could likely cause folks to be criminalized who have nothing to do with the quote-unquote crimes that we're talking about? I also just want to urge the city council to consider what we are spending our money on. This is extremely we're trying to fix a problem. We're putting a Band-Aid on something and not getting to the root of the issue, which is why are any crimes happening in Madison, Wisconsin? Why do, why does sexual violence happen? Why does robbery happen? Why does any of that happen? And it's usually because of a myriad of issues that we need to be funneling resources into at the beginning, not putting Band-Aids on them like with facial recognition technology that is just going to further harm the black and brown communities in Madison. So I am strongly in favor of a full-on ban of this technology because it's going to create even more of a surveillance state. And I also want to point out that a lot of people don't feel safe with the Madison Police Department. So it is not a resource for a lot of people in this city. It is in fact something that's actively harming them. I yield my time.
Thank you. Do we have Rachel?
Not yet. Rachel, if you're listening, because of the device you're on, it wants, it's forcing me to promote you to a panelist. So if you would accept that, but in the meantime, if we could go to Bonnie.
Right, so next is Bonnie Rowe of Somerset Lane in opposition to be followed by Anquita Bahardwaj.
Thank you, Mayor. Alders, I urge you to please vote no on this sweeping ban of facial recognition technology and take a common sense approach. Or at the very least, table it for further discussion, collaboration with MPD and input from the public. collaboration with MPD, and input from the public, and vote at a later date. This is too important to make such a rash decision. As a resident of Madison, I don't want the hands of my police department tied as they work hard to make the community we live in a safer place for all. The exemptions in this ordinance are so limiting to their work. Even in the case of a mass casualty event or exigent circumstances, their hands would be tied from using this technology to help positively identify a murderer. This is unacceptable to me and seems to even pose liability issues for our city. There would be public outrage. This rushed, overreaching ban will limit law enforcement from using key, cutting-edge technology to fight the most horrible crimes against our residents. It might cause us to have to rely on federal agencies in solving our most heinous crimes. Is that what we want? If we think victims of child human trafficking are worthy of this technology to aid in finding and rescuing, aren't all of our residents who fall victim to horrible egregious crime worthy of including this technology as one investigative tool among many? Do we really want to provide cover for those who wish to kill and brutalize our residents? It is important to realize, this technology alone is never due cause for arrest in and of itself. It is merely one investigative lead to be researched and verified. It can be a very significant lead, but not the final, only a piece of evidence and always subject to human intelligence. Put yourself in the shoes of a parent. Say you have a daughter, 11 years old, who goes missing and you fear the worst. But months later, MPD gives you some great news. Thanks to advances in this technology, they were able to find and rescue your daughter. More important than anything, you have your daughter back, traumatized, but home. Then your thoughts turn to who is behind this? Where do they live? Is your little girl really safe now? Who else will be victimized? And MPD gets to explain to you that although they have surveillance images of this potential suspect, the city has banned them from using it to investigate. I think I'd move out of Madison the same day. What kind of city thinks it's worth it to use a technology to rescue a victim but ban its use in potentially identifying the perpetrator behind it? A city that doesn't value justice for the oppressed or consequences for the oppressor or the future victims of these unspeakable crimes? As Detective Sergeant Julie Johnson pointed out, children of color are four times more likely to fall victim to all or to human trafficking and other internet crimes against children. I really hope you will table this vote or vote no on this ordinance. But if you are going to vote for it, then please vote for version four, the alternate sponsored by Alder Hennick. That at least allows MPD a little flexibility to continue doing some of the things they've been doing. Technology, thank you.
Thank you.
And we do have Rachel.
All right, so we'll go to Rachel Christman.
It's Chisman.
Chisman, excuse me.
Thank you, guys, so sorry about that. As the last, I think, two times I've talked, my toddler is probably going to be screaming in the background again. And that is due to the fact that this meeting has gone on so long. I'm sure you guys are feeling it too. So I would like to say, hang on, I've got to get my Google Doc up about what I want to say. So essentially, what the police have shown this year is that they, well, and many years before this, but especially this year, they do things for whatever is in their own favor and not necessarily in the public's favor. I think that's become very, very clear. And so, sure, once we have converted the current day jobs of police officers to be productive to society, this technology may be beneficial if in the hands of the right people. But in this current day, in this current society, this technology will be used in ways that neglect the basic human rights of Americans. Therefore, we cannot adopt the alternate proposed ordinance submitted by Alder Hennick. I do believe we should vote yes on the second substitute ordinance. And also, I just need to say that some of these people that are talking on here, I've been looking them up on Facebook, et cetera, and they're part of this really, really creepy church group. And a lot of what they're saying is just plain lies. And I hope that the public, I hope you guys can all hear me saying this, don't believe the lies and do your own research on this stuff. And I concede my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Anquita Bahardwaj of Langdon Street in support, to be followed by Ashley Trudeau.
Can you hear me?
Barely. Can you speak up at all?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Again, you're pretty quiet. You sound pretty far away from whatever device you're on.
All right, looks like you've muted yourself.
I'm so sorry.
Much better, thank you.
Much better.
Okay, thank you for letting me speak. I'm in support of banning facial recognition. And I want to talk a little bit about 4H and 4I. I feel like those additions is just like, it just makes the whole point of banning facial recognition moot because it basically effectively makes facial recognition a legal thing that the cops can use against non-white people. We have heard so many research papers and academic references from the previous speakers. And I just want to point out a few more so that it can be helpful to understand why it's not a good idea to legalize this. Because we all know that the database that will be fed into the system will be fed by human beings, which are mostly white people. And there is an article written by, there's a book written by, in 2007, by M.P. Toglia. It's called Handbook of Eyewitness Psychology, which talks about cross-race effect, which is also called cross-race bias, other race bias, or own race bias, which is the tendency to more easily recognize faces that belong to one's own racial group. In social psychology, the cross-race effect is described as the in-group advantage, wherein the other feels the effect can be seen as specific from the in-group advantage since it is only applied in interracial or inter-ethnic situations. The cross-race effect is thought to contribute to the difficulties in cross-race identification as well as implicit racial bias. This book also talks about that there have been a lot of studies done about the cross-race effect, where people of black, black people and white people participated. There are also numerous studies done with people of different ethnic backgrounds. For example, there are studies done that compare Hispanic and black people, black and white people, and Japanese participants, Chinese and Korean and white participants, Chinese with Indian and other East Asian ethnic participants, Turkish and German participants. And finally, a study has been done comparing Arab and Israeli Jews. The data from all these studies have come to the same conclusion that the cross-race effect is evident among all people of different races. In the light of these studies, I think it will be very, very foolish to allow this to happen. I also want to say that my phone uses face recognition to open my lock. And sometimes it can't even identify me and I have to put in my passcode. So as we know, even the best technology that money can buy, we have our phones, does not identify non-white people as easily. I think there's a valid point that we need better resources to find people who are guilty of child trafficking and human trafficking. But I think we need to go back to the basics and come up with a better plan.
Okay, thank you. That's your time. Our next registrant is Ashley Trudeau of Johnson Street in support, to be followed by Jake Parker.
Good evening. I'm calling in support of the ban on the use of facial recognition technology as it's written and without the amendment. The speakers that we've heard so far opposing this ban either don't understand or more likely don't care how their experience of policing is different from that of people of color in Madison. And their so-called common sense is a product of lazy thinking and just inexcusable self-interest. Police abuse of black and brown people is a well-deep documented pattern nationwide. And a basic understanding of the history of policing should make it obvious that police exist to maintain the status quo of a white supremacist nation and not for your protection. Facial recognition technology is, one, a poorly functioning tool in the first place. And, two, it would only exacerbate the racist violence that's inherent to policing. The police can't be trusted with this technology. As other speakers already discussed, introducing loopholes to this policy would reduce its efficacy and invite abuse. And at a time when we're confronting this rising tide of overt authoritarianism in our politics and policing, it's especially important that we ban the adoption of increasingly intrusive surveillance technology. This technology has been used to surveil and detain activists, to terrorize immigrants through state contracts with ICE, and to further expand the reach of police. But it's done nothing to address the root causes of poverty and crime. And instead, corporations and governments are investing in new ways to lock people away. Please adopt this ban on agency use of facial recognition technology as it's written in the third amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Jake Parker of Silver Spring, Maryland, representing, excuse me, in opposition, representing the Security Industry Association, to be followed by Julia Matthews.
Hi, good evening. So my association represents companies that provide security and safety solutions, including many headquartered operating in Wisconsin. We also represent many of the leading providers of facial recognition technology. And I guess I'll just point out here that this technology is not new. The benefits are increasing. And I think this should be looked at as far as what are the consequences going to be in the future of limiting the use of this technology and its impact on public safety. And I think one thing to look at, and I think it's really important that we look at the facts here as far as the track record of success, successful use of the technology. There's been over 15,000 human trafficking victims, child victims rescued as a result of this over the last couple of years. The track record is helping solve hate crimes, catching terrorist suspects, solving cold cases. But I think, you know, equally important is the fact that many of the justifications that we're talking about here for doing a ban on the technology are fueled by some misconceptions. And I think one of them is certainly that you've got applications that are, identification processes that are, have significant results for individuals, that those are, there's automatic decision-making based on the technology. It's just not the case. But I think one thing that all the applications have in common is that you're using the technology to speed an existing identification process. This has to occur whether or not you have the technology available to you. So abandoning the technology, you're not limiting the process. You're only limiting its effectiveness. I think one of the areas of misconceptions, too, is how law enforcement currently uses the technology. This is an investigative tool that aids criminal investigations. It's not used for mass surveillance in our country. The most common use is to search department arrest photos to help identify an unknown person of interest. This requires investigators to confirm any potential matches provided by the technology. These search results are leads only, not positive identification or probable cause for arrest, which requires additional investigative work and evidence. I understand this isn't occurring there in Madison, but something to think about. You know, when the technology's not available, investigators have to search these same databases by physical traits like race and gender, as well as arrest history and other photo, to narrow down search fields and examine photos visually. This is one reason why many US law enforcement agencies believe the use of the tool actually contributes to fair and more effective policing by potentially reducing the impact of human bias among officers, investigators, and even eyewitnesses. We know that eyewitness testimony is notoriously prone to error. And we know from the Innocence Project that over 70% of those misincarcerated is due to faulty eyewitness testimony. But I think really important, too, is that there's no evidence that's contributed to racial profiling or other systematic issues that are of real concern in the issue of police reform.
Time. Thank you. Our next registrant is Julia Matthews of Rutledge Street in support, to be followed by Ananda Deacon.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Please vote yes on the second substitute and reject the alternate proposal from Alder Hennick. There have been people on both sides of this talking of fearing for their safety. I just want to point out that there is a huge difference between the basis of the fear on both sides. You can't really compare the fear of people who have seen through countless research studies that this technology is more likely to falsely identify them to people who are afraid because of some nebulae or threat that is pretty much unrelated to this issue anyway. As has already been pointed out and is strongly backed by research, this technology does not work reliably for people of color. As also mentioned, this technology will make the gross disparities of our prison population worse. So people of Madison who are most affected and most in danger have been asking you to work for them and protect them all summer long. Please think about them and protect them. Their fear is backed by countless examples and research. Please listen to empirical data and evidence that is being presented to you tonight that shows the actual harm of this technology. And don't just listen to these hypothetical anecdotes based in fear mongering and lies. As has been pointed out time and time again, this technology is not accurate and doesn't work. If MPD has metrics on how many child sex trafficking victims they have personally saved with facial recognition technology, I would love to see those numbers. Also, if these numbers exist, they need to be considered alongside the metrics of misidentification. I am not moved by the hypothetical stories of a hypothetical 11-year-old daughter in favor of actual stories of real people's lives and safety that are actually at risk of danger here. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Ananda Deacon of West Washington Ave in support, representing the ACLU Student Alliance, to be followed by Benji Ramirez.
Hey, everyone. My name is Ananda Deacon, speaking on behalf of the ACLU Student Alliance here on campus. We are in support of the ban of facial recognition. Before I go on, someone did mention, they brought up that the civilian oversight board is about two-thirds black and that this is a racial disparity of concern. So I'd like to offer my own racial disparity of concern due to the fact that black people are three times more likely than whites to be killed by police. White and black people commit crime at relatively the same rates. So the only explanation here is racism. But moving on, we need to keep in mind that technology is not objective. Technology is made by humans, and humans are socialized into a white supremacist racist society. The ACLU at large released a study that tested Amazon's recognition software. And it showed that 28 congresspeople were matched to look exactly like criminal mugshots, nearly half of which are people of color, one of which was the late civil rights activist, John Lewis. Facial recognition technology in the hands of police has not been helpful for civilians at large, but rather for the perpetuation of violence on black and brown bodies. In 2016, it was seen that within the jurisdictions that use body cams, 93% of prosecutors were able to use that footage against civilians. And only 8% of those prosecutors use that footage to prosecute police. So we'd like to think that the use of body cams helps with the police accountability. But at the end of the day, they're able to turn those cameras on and off. So we've also seen several examples of activists having their pictures and photos used against them to create more political prisoners. They've been sensibly harassed, or they even wind up conveniently dead. And I keep hearing that you wouldn't, you shouldn't be afraid if we're all law-abiding citizens. But this type of thinking clearly shows the lack of understanding that the very skin of black and brown people is already considered a weapon. I don't understand how many times black, brown, queer, and trans folks can sit here and tell you all how harmful this hyper-police state is before you start believing us, before you actually start realizing that there are other experiences in this world besides your own. But I yield my time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Benji Ramirez of Franklin Street in support, to be followed by Gislaine Willsland.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate the time that everyone has put into this conversation. And I am here in support of the ban and specifically the Second Amendment to the ordinance, specifically because, as we have seen throughout the entire history of the United States, there has been an imposition of civil liberties to people of color. There have been an imposition of civility, civility, civil liberties, excuse me, not extended to people of color that have historically always been in the power of white folks. And if we're looking at the disparities that currently exist in our city today, we are, we, as a county, incarcerate more black people per capita than, I think, any other county in the nation. That's something that we need to start reckoning with and actually start having a conversation about why are they, why are there so many black men and women in our prisons? And the answer is simple. It's MPD. It's police forces. It's this overpolicing of people. This being black is criminal under our curtain. This being black is criminal under our curtain policies. And so this ban is taking the step forward to start offering some more liberty and start taking the boot off of our black community here in Madison, off of the Latino and Latina community here. And this is something that I understand is new to a lot of people. This conversation of public safety is, for the first time, being brought forefront and center in our city. Let's get ahead of this. Let's actually do the right thing and make our city safer. You have scores of people coming and telling you that we don't feel safe with police in our community, not in my hood, not in yours. And so what we need is if we're going to start, and this is something that the opposition will tell you, this solidarity and finding unity, then we need to start actually centering these voices in the conversation so that we can reimagine what public safety looks like. Safety to me is when our communities' needs are met, when my homies aren't facing eviction because they can't make rent, when my family has food to eat, when the family down the street has food to eat, when we actually start investing in childcare, instead of just sending people who have turned to crime for survival to prison and never actually offering them the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Gisla Wilson of Morrison Street in support, to be followed by Michelle Quinn.
Gisla, there you go. All right. Yes, I'm speaking tonight in support of the ban on the use of facial surveillance technology by the city, including by the Madison Police Department. I'm against watering it down at all with amendments, and I'm asking that all alders and the mayor support a strict ban on the technology and to vote yes on the second substitute to the ban written by the original authors and reject the alternate proposal. A couple of the speakers before me have talked about why, or asked the question, why would we want to deny the Madison Police Department use of this most novel and efficient technology? And I want to respond to that. The reason is that facial recognition technology is the newest toy on the block, but it's not efficient when you actually look at the data, and I'm going to just simplify things by making an analogy to buying a car. If I buy a car, I would not buy a car, spend money on a car that turns left when I want it to turn right up to 95% of the time. That's not efficiency. Why people would want this mistake-ridden tech in the hands of police who make snap decisions is beyond me. The fact that this tech is being considered for body cams belies the law enforcement argument that it's just another lead. People are concerned and even hysterical about child trafficking, including me, but the tech is especially error-prone for children. It's also error-prone for black and brown communities, for immigrants. Use of the technology will be as likely to condemn victims as crimes as help them. You know, people think about this technology too narrowly, and a common way that people rationalize increases in surveillance is that they have nothing to hide, that the only reason to worry is if you've done something wrong, and that's not true. Privacy is represented by more than the solid walls of our homes. A certain amount of privacy should exist even in public spaces, and it works to limit the power imbalances between police and officials or other people with power and residence. Facial recognition tech is particularly dangerous for already vulnerable populations, people in marginalized communities, immigrants, women, and children. No matter what police will try to assure you of, police and officials usually have very little understanding of the biases and assumptions of the databases and machine learning algos used to make identifications. And I'm very grateful to those who have spoken to that point. In the end, I'm-
Thank you, that's your time.
Yeah, bye.
Our next registrant is Michelle Quinn of Chatham Terrace in opposition, to be followed by Gregory Galumbiak.
Having listened to the recording of the 1118 meeting on this topic, I better appreciate that the use of facial recognition technology has not been adequately regulated or had policy oversight in other cities where broad permissions were initially approved. In the highly-publicized Atlantic article in 2016, "Unequal Accuracy in Identification of Criminals Across Races Using Facial Recognition Technology," owed in part to the algorithm used to make a match being developed with a largely Caucasian database and a small repository of entries for people of color. Consequently, the algorithms that worked fine for identifying white faces yielded way too many false positives for people of color. For those reasons, I support speakers who are concerned that the technology might lead to erroneous arrests and feasibly of innocent people, especially when their features are not white. However, I can also appreciate, and I'm grateful, that facial recognition technology is helpful in identifying certain victims, most especially young human sex trafficking victims across races, in ways that lead to their rescue not possible without it. I suspect this is because those victims may have their hair dyed, cut, and restyled by their pimps to prevent eyewitness identification, or that the facial recognition algorithms can factor in some aging elements. Lastly, as is true of smartphones, hearing aids, TV screens, and the like, technology improves rapidly, largely owing to user complaints. So it follows the algorithm formulas and databases for facial recognition technology have evolved. In fact, recent articles available through a Google Scholar search show that facial recognition technology is more accurate than eyewitness accounts or lineup identifications, sadly, especially when race is a factor. Why does the proposal force the hand of the council to vote facial recognition technology straight up or straight down, rather than take a considered, measured, and evolving approach? At a minimum, please keep the spirit of the ban by voting in favor of it only with amendments that preserve its use for specific crimes such as human sex trafficking and other purposes that are worthy of merit brought to your attention by the public and/or city agencies this evening, with review of findings every 12 or 18 months for any amendments approved to your council. Thank you for remaining open-minded as you deliberate, so that what emerges tonight from your vote is considered, measured, and allows for an evolving evaluation.
Time. Thank you. Our next registrant is Gregory Galumbiak of Jennifer Street in support, to be followed by Jamison Moore.
Hello, I'm speaking in support of the second substitute. Many dozens of civil liberty organizations are calling for a ban on use of this technology. Facial recognition software produces inaccurate and biased results, has repeatedly led to false arrests. A recent study by a British nonprofit found, quote, "on average, establishing 95% of matches wrongly identified innocent people," end quote. In 2019, the U.S. National Institute of Standards Technology produced a facial recognition vendor test report examining 189 facial recognition algorithms from 99 vendors. It concluded that, across all the algorithms examined, when seeking to identify individuals in ideal photos taken under the best and most uniform conditions by comparing them to databases of ideal photos, quote, "a low false positive identification rate is not attainable," end quote. In other words, substantial rate of false matches can't be avoided with any existing software. In such identification tests, existing algorithms exhibit greatly elevated rates of false positives with faces of black individuals and especially black women. When trying to verify the identity of an individual, and accuracy is particularly high with children and the elderly, and almost all existing vendor algorithms show elevated rates of false matches for black, Asian, and especially Native American individuals compared to white individuals. And all this is for ideal photos, where there's consistency in lighting and positioning, and where the facial features of the subject are clear and unobscured. In real-world deployments, accuracy rates tend to be far lower. For example, the facial recognition vendor test report found that the error rate for one leading algorithm climbed from 0.1% for middle-aged adults when matching against high-quality mugshots to 9.3% when matching instead to pictures of individuals captured in the wild. Police facial recognition will disproportionately harm black residents, both because of the high and racially biased error rates in this technology and because the system that relies on mugshot databases includes a disproportionate number of black individuals. In addition, facial recognition technology infringes on a vital constitutional principle, the right to privacy, raising serious Fourth Amendment issues. It could permit cataloging of sensitive information and unchecked location tracking, and it could profoundly impact First Amendment rights, endangering and chilling First Amendment activities and press freedoms. In their article entitled "Facial Recognition is the Perfect Tool for Oppression," professors Woodrow Herzog and Evan Selinger note, quote, "Facial recognition technology is the most uniquely dangerous civilian mechanism ever invented. It's the missing piece of an already dangerous surveillance infrastructure built because that infrastructure benefits both the government and private sectors." At the project on government oversight notes, facial recognition surveillance threatens to become as powerful a means of finding and tracking individuals as cell phone and GPS tracking. While the Supreme Court has imposed a warrant requirement for these other forms of electronic location tracking, no such limit exists for facial recognition. In time, facial recognition technology will become a powerful location-tracking tool because there is no middleman for government-managed cameras that can access the data. The terrorists are-
Time.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Jamison Moore of Garden View Court in support, to be followed by Jacob Trinan.
Hello, thank you, Mayor Satya. I would like to begin with saying I do much appreciate Gregory's previous statements as he appeared before me. While facial recognition technology could be useful for identifying victims and perpetrators, there must be safeguards and procedures in place regarding authorization of use of said technologies to ensure the civil liberties of the citizens are not being undermined and does not affect one's First Amendment or Fourth Amendment rights. Machine learning is a technology in its infancy compared to traditional computational systems, which needs to be considered with extreme care. As many have said, this technology has a bias due to its dataset it is fed and the changes of one's physical composition over time. In addition, companies such as Clearview, which scrape public images to use in their dataset, create an enormous privacy concern if in the hands of police, allowing for previously unthinkable levels of automation and surveillance. Something that should be highly considered with regards to the use of facial recognition would be the vendors in question and where the vendors are sourcing these images from. I believe that these images should most likely not be sourced from any public data sets, and instead should come from internal state image data sets or from local community policing data sets. Unfortunately, due to systemic problems with policing, which have occurred for the past 150-plus years, there is a disproportionately large amount of various minority groups which would be impacted by this. This is a situation in which a tool such as a scalpel will be needed to proceed forward rather than a binary decision of yes or no. I urge you to please consider the second substitute, and I would like to yield my time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Jacob Trinan of Stevens Street in support, to be followed by Amelia Roycomar.
I would like to speak today in support of the ban on facial recognition by police. I'd like to echo what Jamison just pointed out, and the fact that I really don't think that we should be pushing this kind of new and underdeveloped technology into the hands of our police department, which have the power to arrest individuals and affect them for the rest of their lives. Further on that, I think that banning this would be the first step in trying to ease the power that the police department have in our city's racial discrimination problems in law enforcement. And I would urge the city council to continue to take further steps in this process. That's all I have to say today. I'll yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Amelia Roycomar of Arena, Wisconsin, in support, representing the community response team, to be followed by Juliana Bennett.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, okay. Thank you to the alders who put forth the substitution and the original ban. I'm urging you to support the ban. There is the caveat within there that says that they can use with restriction the technology when it comes to child sex trafficking and children disappearing. That's reasonable. You know, I think that it's critical to the people calling up, demanding that we give the police whatever they want. Start thinking about responses to the social ills within our communities that are sort of over the counter. I mean, this is white supremacy we're talking about. We're talking about white supremacy, patriarchy, capitalism, which fosters and nurtures these social ills. So instead of looking for a little bit of aspirin to fix it, let's talk about deep root cause analysis. And I understand that no one wants to be without options if their loved one disappears. I certainly would not want to be without options. But the risk here that this option, is that this option being offered to us will result in the state-sanctioned incrimination and disappearing of people who are not guilty of the crime they've been falsely identified as having committed. And that risk will be predominantly posed to black and brown people. So I understand that there are people out there who think, well, you know, you have some casualties in order to have this privilege and this tool for saving our children. No. If you want things to change so we just trust the police and that, so that we don't have these issues in our communities, you show up and demand our nation-state, city, and county meet the full budgetary needs of our schools, so that they may be run by culturally competent people and deliver an excellent experience and healthy children. And you show up and demand they fully meet the mental and physical health care needs, jobs, transportation, housing needs, okay? Let's fully fund those so that we can offer an excellent living experience and environment in this city and healthy families, right? Let's do that. That's where the root is to all these issues, is that we are not taking care of each other. And we can't expect to have safe communities if we do not invest in healthy communities. Healthy communities, communities that are already healthy, don't have the police around them nearly as much as communities that have not been invested in and are not healthy. So let's go to the root cause of these issues of sex trafficking, of crime. And you show up and demand that we fully fund the institutions and the community-based solutions that will actually prevent those social ills from happening. Stop with the over-counter responses that punish-
Thank you, that's your time. Our next registrant is Juliana Bennett of West Johnson Street, to be followed by Ayomi Albusay.
Hi, I'm Juliana Bennett, and I'm a community member, student, a member of the BIPOC Coalition. And I'm speaking in support of banning facial recognition technology. I'm not going to go too far into how it is bad. I believe that many people have already touched on it, and don't need to be redundant in that sense, but facial recognition technology is probably one of the world's most divisive uses of technology. Some people, including IBM, Google, and others, have moved away from using facial recognition just because of how it is, it is not the best technology, period. And I think that I do sympathize with people saying, like, with child trafficking, and that is important. However, I do believe that if facial recognition technology is literally only useful in identifying old white men, then it is not going to be the best form to identify these kids and other cases. And I believe there's plenty of anecdotal evidence backing that up. So I think that we should be investing in other- So I think that we should be investing in other forms that will help end that and work on investing in the community other than this facial recognition technology. And at the end of this, I will say that, to be honest, I'm very frustrated with the city council. And even though I am talking right now, many others are talking in support of this, even just the past city budget meeting where literally 141 people showed up in opposition to the cops grant. And you still had people that supported it on the city council. I think that just shows that you prioritize certain people's voices over others. For example, Mayor Satya, you've prioritized certain people's voices in emails when people are still emailing you to have our faces shown. I think it just shows that you are literally scared to see our faces in these meetings. And in reality, these meetings would be taking place in person, so it's just common courtesy for our faces to be shown. So with that being said, I think that it's very clear that this facial recognition technology is racist. It is very clear that there are other ways that we can look at what policing is in Madison and better do that. And at the end of the day, I feel like, and I don't feel like it, I know that you guys are just ignoring our voices and just listening to whatever you want to do anyways. And I will see that again, depending on where you vote today. I yield my time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Ayomi Abusay of State Street, to be followed by Sheila Martin.
Hi. So before I begin, I just want to bring up the fact that someone previously mentioned earlier in this discussion how small the black community is, mentioned it was around 6%. No matter how small a marginalized group is, especially a community of color, they're still a part of this conversation and they're still a part of this community. I feel like it's imperative that we have representatives, knowing that you represent everyone, no matter how small they are. And we could clearly seen over the summer how loud our voice is even as a marginalized group. Organizing with BIPOC members like myself, we have seen how our voice is going to change the world and have no plans on stopping it. I've seen, even in my own home, how my skin has scared the police. And I truly don't believe that you can protect anyone that you fear. My skin already looks like a threat. And so when the conversation of overpolicing begins, it looks like me. If we look at a Forbes article that was released this year, it says, quote, "Our communities, keeping our communities safe doesn't have to come at the expense of our fundamental freedoms. We should be able to live safely in our homes without being watched or targeted by the government." Talking about that, we have to also talk about the issue of trust. And I don't believe that right now our city has the trust of its community members. The technology that you guys are mentioning isn't revolutionary if it doesn't work. And it clearly doesn't work for marginalized groups like myself. In that Forbes article, it also mentioned that it typically misreads people, especially black women. And I think that's really important to mention. As someone who is black, as a sister, I worry about my brother, my mother, and my father. I believe that anyone who is seeing this, who is in opposition to this ban, isn't trying to be empathetic and doesn't see how the hurt and pain that we've had throughout time for marginalized groups is apparent in this as well. So I enthusiastically vote in support. And with that, I yield my time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Sheila Martin of Keys Ave, to be followed by Molly Ginsburg.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm speaking tonight in opposition to the complete ban on facial recognition and adoption of version number four amendment. It's my understanding that the MPD uses this technology to find missing persons, children appearing in child pornography, and to locate perpetrators of sex trafficking. And I simply can't understand how anyone can propose not using it for these purposes. In addition, if a crime has been committed and facial recognition can be a piece of information in that investigation, I think this is another important use that must be maintained for the safety of the community. I would also like to register in support of '77, which I believe extends the MPD and Journey Mental Health Partnership for another four years because I think, given the huge exacerbation of mental health issues, that this is a very important tool for all of the community to have. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Molly Ginsburg of Westview Lane. Oh, excuse me. We're now into available to answer questions. So can we circle back and see if we have either Gary Halverson or Megan Spielbauer? We were not available previously.
I do not see them.
Okay. So then, let me tell you that we have available for questions, Molly Ginsburg of Westview Lane in support, Katrina Gilliam of Oak Ridge Ave in support, Mary Lou Anderson of Buckeye Road in opposition, Thomas Johnson of Belmont Road in opposition, Ron Gratz of High Point Road in opposition, Philip Klinker of Mifflin in support, Barry Luke of Goodland Park, neither supporting nor opposing, William Palos of Alexandria Lane in opposition, Julie Fitzpatrick of Pebblebrook Drive in support, Mark Nienfeld of Chapel Hill Road in support, Jack Switzer of Westbridge Trail in Wanakee in opposition, Lourdes Poyg of West Wash in support, Scott Resnick of Hoyt in support. All available to answer questions but not wishing to speak. Are there questions for any of our registrants tonight on this item? Alder Hennick.
Yes, is Kayla DeBois still on?
Do we have Kayla still?
I am not seeing Kayla.
How about Jake Parker?
Go ahead, Alder.
Yes, Jake, I was just wondering, on a national basis in the United States, what kind of wrongful arrest, conviction, or imprisonment have we seen due to facial recognition technology?
Well, I can tell you that contrary to some misleading reports we've seen in the media, we were not seeing cases of misidentification by US law enforcement agencies where they're attributable to the technology errors or demographic disparities. And this is despite over 10 years of successful use and many thousands of investigations. We did see earlier this year where the first case emerged, where it was alleged in Detroit that where they said the technology caused it. But the mayor of Detroit, Mike Dugan, did an investigation and concluded that the technology wasn't to blame for the mistaken arrest that did occur, setting other factors.
Gotcha. Thank you. And just, I don't know the background, but what kind of rates do we see in eyewitness accounts?
My understanding from the data from the Innocence Project is that faulty eyewitness identifications play a role in over 70% of the mistaken or wrongful imprisonments.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Presto Giacomo?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I have a question for Scott Resnick.
All right, can we get Mr. Resnick here, if he's on the Zoom? Go ahead, Alder.
Awesome. Thank you, Mayor. So my question to you is, as someone also involved in the tech industry and also a distant predecessor, my indiscernable on the council, could you speak a little bit about why you support this ban and speak a little bit to the context of it as well?
Sure. Thank you for the question. I would look at sort of three general areas of why I support the ban. One, the development of facial recognition technology assumes a database of subset of images. It's a database that every city council member is a part of. It's a database that probably half of Americans are a part of. And it's what actually allows service technology providers to build these algorithms for law enforcement. Sort of the three or four areas of why I support a ban, or at least a partial ban, is one, these algorithms, essentially, there's no ability to deny a resident of Madison from being a part of an image recognition database. There's no way to deny the opportunity of consent by having law enforcement provide these images and datasets to essentially third-party providers. The federal regulations here have not stepped in, similar to GDPR in Europe and elsewhere, to really provide protections to our residents. There are issues with inaccuracies, which do jeopardize the effectiveness of the tool and automation biases that folks have spoken to in depth. I would also say that there's no algorithmic accountability here. So these databases are being built, you know, not having the scrutiny of the public eye, of city council, of any other jurisdiction, of how these databases are actually built, which is why other states, such as Oregon and New Hampshire, have banned it, cities in California, such as San Francisco, have issued bans, and why large corporations like Microsoft and IBM have also stopped any sales towards law enforcement usage of this tool. It doesn't mean that it won't someday be an asset that we all can use, but it does have quite a few jeopardy that we really should wait for federal legislation before stepping forward with.
Alder, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Hennick.
Yes, Greg Golembik, question. You referenced a number of different studies, and I guess I just wanted to kind of get another perspective on harm being done to individuals due to this technology. What would you look at as far as any wrongful convictions or arrests or imprisonments in the country due to this technology?
Do we have Mr. Golembik? There you go. Go ahead.
Jake Parker just claimed that, for example, that there was only one case. I think he was citing the case of Robert Williams. That is not true. Like, right here in front of me, here's just another one. Controversial Detroit facial recognition got him arrested for a crime he didn't commit. It's a case of Michael Oliver. It says, "Identified Michael Oliver as an investigative lead after that hit. The teacher who had his phone snatch from his hand identified Oliver in a photo lineup as the person responsible. He was charged with felony larceny, et cetera, et cetera. And it turned out he was completely innocent." This is not just a case where one individual got wrongly identified. And as the NIST study indicated, it specifically said, "A low false positive rate is not possible with existing facial recognition software." Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. President Carter. President Carter, you're muted.
Gregory, you mentioned two cases. Were they both in Madison or where?
Those cases were both in Detroit.
Did you say Detroit?
Correct. And one of those cases, I emailed you a column that one of them subsequently wrote. Like, give me just one second. Sorry for the delay. Like, he had noted, "I was wrongfully arrested because of facial recognition. Why are police allowed to use it? Federal studies have shown that facial recognition systems misidentify Asian and black people up to 100 times more often than white people. Why is law enforcement even allowed to use such technology when it obviously doesn't work? I get angry when I hear companies, politicians, and police talk about how this technology isn't dangerous or flawed. What's worse is that before this happened to me, I actually believed them. I thought, what's so terrible if they're not invading our privacy and all they're doing is using this technology to narrow in on a group of suspects?" End quote.
Okay, thank you. Is Scott Resnick still on?
Go ahead, Alder.
Scott, can you tell me how many companies in general are using facial recognition outside of the police department or law enforcement in general that you know of?
That's a great question that I could get you the answer to shortly. My own company uses facial recognition software. We use a popular technology called Amazon Recon. It's spelled recognition, but recognition spelt with a K. We also have used Watson for facial recognition software. So it is in the thousands, if not tens of thousands, that use some form of facial recognition.
And as far as you know, with these companies that are outside of law enforcement, what is the percentage of misidentification?
So we were tasked at one point to identify what is a deer and what is a squirrel. In that case, we had a very low... As you build additional databases, your information gets better over time. So you will have biases very early on when your datasets are weak. And as the datasets increase in images, in connectivity, it improves. If you were to look at foreign databases, such as used by, you know, inside the nation of China or elsewhere, where you have databases of essentially every citizen, you have incredibly high rates. In the United States, it's roughly half of the population is included in at least one type of database that's accessible through third parties.
And can you tell me, just with your experience, is the cellphones, smartphones companies using this?
Yes.
Whether it's an app or whatever?
Yes. And I will say, for any, I don't know... For any of you that are on Facebook, Facebook certainly uses image recognition software of various types. Anytime an individual is in the media or that image is shared, that is added into public databases. Council members, because of their public profile, are very readily accessible inside these types of databases. Your average resident, who may only have a driver's license picture, may or may not be included on a US passport picture, may or may not be on Facebook, are less likely to be included in national databases.
And being in this technology world, would you say that in five to 10 years, this will be more prevalent?
I would assume that every two years, that entire database of all images doubles. So as the databases improve, you will get a higher likelihood of recognition of an individual. That also means the inherent trust of the database may also improve. But with that trust, you do want to have a level of skepticism if you are doing something as far as making an arrest.
Great. Thank you. One more question for Jake Parker again.
Go ahead, Alder.
Jake, in your line of work, how many, and maybe I wrote this down wrong, but... but you have worked with several different companies in different cities, including law enforcement, correct?
Right, the companies are members of our association.
Okay, that's fine. And also law enforcement, am I right on that?
They work with law enforcement, are members.
Okay. And my question to you is, roughly, in your experience, how many, I guess municipalities or states are using facial recognition right now?
I wish I had a precise answer for you, but I know three or four years ago, it was about a quarter of all law enforcement agencies, and I'm certain it's higher than that now. But I apologize, I don't have a real specific answer.
Oh, that's okay. Thank you very much, though. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Tierney.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Mr. Parker as well. And basically, I think overwhelmingly, all the testimony we've heard has been in the context of facial recognition usage and law enforcement. But I'm wondering if Mr. Parker has any knowledge about other governmental agencies that might use this technology? You know, specifically, I'm thinking, you know, are there any public health departments in the United States right now that might be using this in an effort to augment contact tracing efforts, for example? You know, if there's an event and, you know, it's been photographed or videotaped, are there any applications or any municipalities, governmental agencies that use this to try to better their ability to contact people that might have had exposures? If he could answer that, if possible, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I assume you're talking about, like, public sector uses that would be affected by legislation like this outside of law enforcement, right?
Right.
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't have a great answer for you on the contact tracing. I know that has been explored. I know that as far as the uses that I know of that are currently, they're currently being used by public agencies, I think, like, health care facilities are using this for access control, where you have a touchless interface to enter clean rooms, for example, or where there's certain areas of the hospital, you can be like a cleared person to be there. So that's basically an access control use. It's also being used in places like secure areas, in courthouses, and other types of municipal facilities. It's also being used in security systems, where you've got your augmenting ability of security staff to address threats, and folks that are, you know, prohibited from being on the property, alerting them when someone shows up that might be that person, they can go visually address and assess. And I do know a lot of commercial facilities, probably also government as well, are looking at the access control uses of facial recognition to reduce touch points within a building. So for entry and exit from the building, but also within the building.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Alder Balday.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a question for Scott, Scott Resnick. So Scott, you did explain briefly, basically, how the technology works. So my first question is, from your experience, how will this technology return around identity?
Sorry, I missed the question. Would you mind repeating it?
How can this technology return around identity? I mean, what are the possibilities? Or how does it work to an extent that it identifies somebody wrongly? What will happen for that to happen?
So there's a number of false positives when working with this technology. Very often, third parties ideally report that back to improve upon the data set. Now, that might be on the onus of the party using the data set. In this example, there may or may not be, you know, reasons or recourse to help assist build a better data set. So it would essentially be, in this case, let's say, the Madison Police Department determined that there was a wrongly identified individual. That data would be then reported back to a third-party provider to, in essence, improve the data set.
So can you also, being in the technology world, speak to the auditing process of the software development?
The auditing process?
Yes, before something is deployed to production or used, what is the process to make sure that the product is right for its purpose?
So that varies by company. You know, each company has a certain threshold that they're going to advertise or share. Very often, on the work that we look at, we try to reach 98% accuracy before deploying a component. But that is certainly dependent on the third party. If you were to put forward and use a, you know, decide to use facial recognition software, that would be a certain principle that the council should certainly think about and discuss how to implement. That is a very important piece to this puzzle.
So generally, to your understanding, this process includes avoiding biases or breaking rules and regulations when the software is being audited, or at least, you know, when you are going through the development process?
Sorry, would you mind repeating that?
So the question is generally, is there anything built in the system to avoid breaking the laws? Like, when you are building your software, you're making sure that you are going by old guidelines required by the federal government, a state government, or a local government? Is there anything built into the process to make sure that the software is not built to be biased?
You know, you are relying, when you're building these pieces of, I will say, very, very technical pieces of software, that you are relying on many libraries that are built, in some cases by thousands of developers, many that you never meet. One of the dangers of this technology is that there really is not any type of federal regulation at this point that has been passed that put parameters to verify that exact point of how biases have been addressed, in some cases even have been disclosed. It's the reason why Duke University and Stanford have discontinued many of their public data sets when realizing that the efficacy of even how some of the images were actually obtained didn't meet those university standards. So, you know, as these large pieces of new technology are being built, you're just relying on many parties to comply with the law. In a moment where there's really, you mentioned state and federal law, you know, there's not much governance in this area or space.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I have no other Alders wishing to answer questions. So the motion in front of us is the second substitute. Is there discussion, excuse me, are there questions for staff first? See, no questions for, oh, yeah, I almost got away with it. Alder Henick.
Yes, I'd like to ask Chief Wall a couple of questions. First one would be, can you give us kind of a number of how many investigations we've, in the short time we've had our special victims units up and running, we've helped to solve with this technology?
So just as a bit of background, this year, we added a detective position to our special victims unit focused entirely on human trafficking. And so this is all very new to us. So really, we're just talking about 2020. And one of the things that is part of those investigations and part of that detective's work is working with some external partners, particularly to try to locate juveniles primarily, sometimes young adults that are missing and endangered, and we believe that are human trafficking situations. And to locate them, rescue them, investigate the crime, and then obviously get the victims the services they need. And so this year, we've had about 12 juveniles that this process has been used, that we've been able to locate them, remove them from the trafficking situation, unite them with their family, or get them into a safe environment.
Thank you. Could you talk just a little bit about algorithms and databases of the services that we've utilized here that you might expect to use?
So I will preface, you know, everything I say, that I am far from an expert on facial recognition. I have, over the last month and a half, since this ordinance has been introduced, really tried to educate myself and get up to speed on it. And I think one of the, sort of, the most striking things to me is that it's almost misnomer to use facial recognition as one sort of entity, because it covers such a broad spectrum of applications. It's hard to talk about it so broadly. But clearly, the two big variables are, in addition to the algorithm, is the photo you're inputting, and where does that photo come from? And then what are you comparing that photo against? What's the gallery of photos? So obviously, when you pull, open up your iPhone, you've got one photo, which is your face, compared with a photo that's in the iPhone, and it's a one-to-one photo to gallery. Some applications might use a gallery of mugshots. Or, I think a question was asked earlier about other agencies or other applications outside of law enforcement. And I know in some states, I don't think Wisconsin does it, but in some states, when you go to apply for your driver's license and they take your photo, they will run that photo against all other driver's license photos just to make sure you're not applying for a second photo or a second license under a different name as a means to detect fraud. And I think the federal government does that for passports as well. So there's quite a bit of variation in terms of what that pool of databases are. Certainly, there are some applications that do try to sort of go out and look for anything that's available online and connect and pull and make connections from that. And I think generally, those are less accurate and less effective. And I think the narrower that gallery is, generally, the better and the less concern there would be in terms of privacy for how it's being used.
Gotcha. And what do you think the difference is? What are the applications? It's listed in the substitute and the alternate, but what are the applications that you think MPD would be most benefited by using this technology for?
Well, you know, again, this is very new to us. And for me, I think it's very important that we're able to continue doing what we're doing. So that we're working to protect child victims and locate them, rescue them, to identify child pornography, and do the things that we're doing now. And I also think that, you know, in the future, it'd be nice to have the capacity for, if we have a significant crime or the significant risk to public safety, that we have the capacity to reach out to external partners and see if we can use this technology. You know, I think of, you know, the Mayfair Mall shooting that just happened in Wauwautosa a couple of weeks ago. And if that happened in Madison, I think we would want to use every tool possible to identify who that person was. And I think, you know, for me, the key points about that discussion, I think, are twofold. Is one, is I think you heard one of the speakers mention earlier, you know, this is never a end result. This is never the end of the investigation. This is really just the beginning of it. And it's never used as the sole basis for an arrest. It's really an investigative league, and it's really analogous to a Crimestoppers tip. And if we released a photo to the public, we get tips all the time. That's John Smith, that's my neighbor. And that doesn't mean we go out and act on those. We investigate it, and we have to develop our proof. Or if there isn't proof, if it's not the right person, which is often the case with tips, then we move on. And I think there's a lot of analogies there. But I certainly recognize the privacy interest with many of these other uses that are out there and other applications to it. And I'm just looking for something that strikes the right balance between privacy and public safety and sort of hits that sweet spot.
So basically, other than the sex trafficking, child pornography, those cases that are listed in the alternate, and a mass event with significant risk to the public, I mean, we're not really using it for anything else right now, and that's really all we'd be looking to utilize it for in the future at this point, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Those are my questions for the moment.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Balday.
Just said you use the tool on a limited basis right now?
Yes, very limited.
On what cases do you use the tool?
It's, again, to clarify, we don't have this technology. We reach out to external partners and help us. And it's all our special victims units investigating primarily human trafficking, child pornography, you know, internet crimes against children. Those are the things that fall under the gamut of that unit and those external partners that provide support to us.
So how does that relationship works? I mean, how do I understand, okay, MPD somehow is using this tool? How do I understand how you use the tool? If you do not have it in-house, what is the relationship between you and the agencies that you work with on this tool?
So I think the most, probably the easiest application, and the most common one that we've used is if we have a missing juvenile and there are circumstances indicating that the juvenile is at an elevated risk to be involved in human trafficking, that we'll have a photo provided to us, typically by a parent. And these external partners can take that photo, and then they can look online to find advertisements where human traffickers are advertising children for sex. And they're using a photo, or a photo of the child, and the external partner will connect those things, and we'll be able to see where the ads are. And in some of them here in Madison, we've seen some in other states, and asking other police agencies to go and follow up and locate where these children are so we can get them out of those environments and return them to their parents.
So can you speak to success stories and fail stories since you started partnering with other agency on the use of this tool?
So in the context we're using, I think the number of juveniles is 12 that we've located and removed from a human trafficking environment as a result of this. There's also some young adults that we have been able to locate and make contact with as a result. Not aware of any of the information that we've received back that has ever been incorrect or hasn't been the proper person. But again, that is, you know, part of that is, you know, the technology, and also part of it is what we do when we get the information. And that's just a piece of the investigation, a piece of the puzzle, and not the be-all, end-all. And so the process and the human element is a key component of it.
Do you also have a process of checks and balances when you get these identities? Do you just say, well, they said this Sam or Mr. X or Mrs. Y, or this is this posing? Do you have a process of verification, making sure that before you act on something, in fact, you think that is true?
So that's part of the investigative process. And so right now, the number of people that, in the department, that are allowed to do this is very small. And in fact, I've actually, as we've been having this discussion about the ordinance and delving into this, I've actually, they have to get my approval now to do it, developing a little more formal policy and procedure on it. But certainly, their investigative process will take the output from the external partner and then sort of review independently. and then sort of review independently and make sure that everything connects and seems right. And if it doesn't appear to be the right person or the right connection, then they would not follow up on it, or they would not act on it, or they would do some other investigative steps to either confirm or refute that it was the person.
So maybe last question. Would you know prior to this resolution coming forward, what MPD may have been thinking of using this tool for? I mean, apart from sex trafficking, missing kids, and things like that, have you ever had any discourse on using the tool for something else?
Not really, just because we haven't, you know, it hasn't been something on our radar screen to try to acquire. You know, I guess, to be honest, I don't really know how much this stuff costs to pay for or to subscribe to or whatever model is. My guess is it's not inexpensive. So it's never been on our radar screen. And I think, you know, some of what we're talking about is, you know, looking to the future a little bit because the technology is my, what I've seen from looking into this, it's, you know, it's improving exponentially, which I think is, you know, just like every other piece of technology that we all use is, look at it 10 years ago and then look at what it is today. It's a world of difference, and I think. So it hasn't really jumped to the forefront yet. But so the ordinance has really made me think about what's that balance? When wouldn't we use it? And that's sort of kind of where I've struck that balance that seems reasonable to me.
So right now, then you will say, say, for example, if the council votes to ban this with the exception of a few things, it will have no impact on your work as a police department?
Well, I think, well, it depends on what's passed, of course. I think the language in the substitute is a little unclear to me whether that's intending for us to continue what we're doing now or not. Because, so I think that would be something I would hope for clarification. And if that's clarified or the wording has changed to make it clear, then you're right, that would just sort of maintain the status quo. But that's something I would hope for clarification.
So Mayor, can I ask the city attorney to clarify that if that is possible now?
Absolutely. We have Assistant City Attorney Paulson, I believe, is here. There she is, to answer questions on this.
Okay, so Attorney Paulson, you did hear what the doubt is around the chief's understanding of what the alternative is. Can you speak to what the alternative is trying to accomplish?
Do you mean the substitute?
The substitute, I mean, yes.
Okay. Well, the second substitute right now, the language is that the department can only use this tool when they're trying to identify individuals who are victims of human trafficking, child sexual exploitation, or missing children. So that would be to just identify them. So if the chief or the police department already knows the identity of a child that's missing, then they wouldn't be able to use these tools because the tools specifically in the ordinance, it says to identify the individuals.
So Chief, how does that impact your work now that you know the answer?
Well, based on that description, I think we would not be able to continue what we're doing with that language. Because again, we know who the victims are. We're trying primarily to locate them and then to aid in the investigation so we can remove them from that human trafficking environment. But we, you know, we know their names because the parents have reported them and are giving us a photo and asking for our help. So I think that's, so that causes me a little concern.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Marcy.
Thank you, Alder Balday. Alder Tierney.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question that I hope Attorney Paulson might be able to answer, or if there are other members of the city attorney staff that are familiar with criminal procedures that would like to answer it, that would work as well. But during the testimony this evening, we heard from a number of people who said how this software can, you know, you can take a photo that's been taken somewhere, run through this software, and it might come up with any number of matches of people that could potentially be depicted in the original photo. So I guess one of the questions I have is, you know, hypothetically, let's say there's a person that's arrested for, you know, on suspicion of committing a crime. And perhaps there's an eyewitness testimony, but then facial recognition was also used at some point. And facial recognition comes back with, you know, five potential people that could be depicted in the photo. Is that then something that during a criminal proceeding, court proceeding, can be discovered? And so then are we actually giving a defense attorney the ability to sow reasonable doubt with the jury to say, well, yeah, the prosecution says they have this witness, but the police also ran this photo through the software, and there were five other individuals that could have been as well? So I'm wondering, you know, from a criminal court proceeding perspective, could this technology of used or used improperly conceivably be of greater assistance to a defense? That's my question.
Yeah, and a prosecutor that has, any evidence a prosecutor has, they have to turn over to the defense side, whether it helps the defense case or helps the prosecution case. They have a duty to disclose all evidence they have to the defense side. And I don't know if Chief Wall has anything, since he works in the criminal area more than I do, if he has anything he wants to add to that. But they would be required to turn it over if the prosecutor's aware of that evidence.
And, you know, it's a good opportunity to highlight one of the issues is that the output that the algorithm is going to give is sort of software-dependent or user-dependent. So you could put in my photo into a certain gallery and say, give me the best match merit score that the algorithm puts together, or give me the best five matches, or give me the top 10. And then the human person, the detective, the investigator, looks at either the one, the five, or the 10 and says, which is the match here? Which is it? It's just, it's an investigative lead rather than a definitive answer. Because presumably, they don't know, you don't know who I am when we submit that photo. But certainly, it could be used to do that. I think it probably, with the long history of a lot of litigation with eyewitness identification, and I think as long as it was just one piece of a broader investigation, that's nothing that we would rely on. So I'm not aware either of it ever harming a prosecution in a case in the way you're describing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder O'Healy.
Thank you, Chief Wall. My question is based on the testimonial that we hear from the community. Has there been a time where there was a false identification with the, you know, the partner that you're working with? And what has been the solution? Since a lot of the testimonial tonight alluded to the, this surveillance doesn't work for the brown or, you know, black people because they can be false, or the software is not as reliable due to the accountability. So I'm just wondering, since you have used these things, have you encountered where you came across false identification of individual that was falsely identified?
And the answer to that is no. And again, you know, our use is very limited, and we're very new at this. So this is not something that, you know, we're certainly the experts on in terms of the scope of our experience. But we have not had results that have been incorrect for the limited time we've been using it. And again, we've done, you know, set up processes to ensure that it is, even in the event that there would be incorrect output from the algorithm, that our human processes with detectives and investigators reviewing that and recognizing it's just one piece of evidence for them to consider in a broader scope of things, would have protections in place to avoid any bad outcomes coming from that if it were to happen. You know, we have a lot of experience again with eyewitness identifications. And certainly, there's the potential for problems with eyewitness identifications. And we've continued to refine the process over the years in our policy and how those things are administered. And that has gone a long way to improve the reliability of eyewitness identifications. And that's all based on the process.
And my other question is, based on the data that you have, do you have the demographic of those identified for, let's say, who are those individuals? You know, the race, the gender, whatever it is, you know? Do you have any data? Because, you know, hearing the testimonial, it's stating that it's mainly for black and brown and underrepresented communities. And I'm just so want to know if that's the fact.
Yeah, I don't have that data, unfortunately, Alder. Again, we're, you know, we're using this for victims in these cases. And so the input is coming from parents and guardians reporting their children is missing. But I do not have the demographic breakdown of those 12 that we've located or any of that, unfortunately, at this point.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Henneck.
Thank you. My question is for Marcy Paulson. We talked previously about the different versions and if we would be able to continue the use that we've been talking about for MPD. Would the alternate allow us to continue the use that we are currently doing that we've heard so much about?
Yes, I believe so. According to Chief Wall and the language that's in it now, they would be allowed to continue with what their current operations are.
And is it fairly limited? I mean, would we be able to take, say, a surveillance photo from a convenience store burglary and use that with any sort of these systems?
I mean, you could only use that if you're looking for a missing child. I mean, it's specifically outlined, missing adults, human trafficking, child sexual abuse, child pornography. And then there's another subsect that says for any serious felony which poses a significant risk to public safety. But that, like, if it's a burglary, I would say that wouldn't fall under these categories. But if it involves one of those, then it could be used for those purposes.
So it's a very limited situations that we'd be able to use this under?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alder Presto Giacomo.
I have a question for Attorney Paulson. Quickly, I'm going to preface it by saying, right here, right now, since the beginning of these discussions, it has always been our intent to allow MPD to continue to use, continue to operate in this way. And so I actually, you could go back into multiple meetings and word for word, I said, I want MPD to be able to continue to operate in this way. And so, little confused how we got to this point. But I guess my question is, if we did change the, and I'm prepared to make amendment once we get to the point, if we did change it to identify and locate, would that solve the situation and allow MPD to locate and identify victims rather than diving into the whole issue of using it for felonies or crimes?
It would allow you to identify and locate the victims. It wouldn't cover, like, a serious crime, you know, like a bomber situation or something like that. And it wouldn't allow you to locate missing adults. So say an elder person has gone missing, it wouldn't allow you to do that. But if you added locate, that would cover more identifying and locating the children and the victims of human trafficking.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders with questions for staff?
I have a question.
President Carter.
Thank you. Chief Wall, well, I should say, Marcy, when you say children, what age group are we talking?
Well, generally, children are considered, it depends on what statute you looked at. It's either under 18 or under 17, depending on what definition you're looking at.
Okay. And Chief Wall, when you were talking about children and young adults involved in human trafficking, what age group are you talking about?
It'd be under 18.
Under 18. And so when you look, and then I'm going to go back to Marcy for a minute. When you're looking at these two, the alternate and the substitute, the alternate seems to address Chief Wall's concerns more so than the substitute. Am I correct on that?
Yes, it incorporates more individuals that could be located.
Okay. And Chief Wall, as you said, this is new. You guys don't really have an extensive pattern of use of this. And the technology is going to either change or new technology replaces that in the future. But do you see the department expanding? Or is you feel that the department, right now, this is what they can handle?
Or you mean the language in the alternate?
Yep.
Yeah, you know, it's hard for me to, right now, envision contemplating that. I mean, I think for me, that breaks the right balance. And those are circumstances where I think it's compelling.
And are we looking at working with agencies, not only outside of our municipality, but across state lines, when we are looking for children that's been enticed into human trafficking?
Certainly, some of the ads located have been out of state, have been in other states. And we've had to ask other agencies to follow up.
Okay, thank you. And are we still looking at the different software a few years ago? It was, I believe, the, was it the Backpage or something like that a few years ago where you were seeing all these advertisements?
It's not Backpage anymore. It's something-
It's moved on.
It's moved on to a new home that Detective Sergeant Johnson mentioned it. And I can't remember what the new home is, but it's a whole new spot that's migrating.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney, questions for staff?
Questions for staff, questions for Acting Chief Wall.
Go ahead.
Chief, I just want to have you to restate. I thought I heard that the face recognition is not used across all MPD, that it was specifically used for specific departments. I want you to reiterate that so I can get that in my head clearly. And the other question that I had was, in the substitute, where we are today, the language in the substitute gives you the clarity of being able to continue using what you've been doing in terms of the other departments using surveillance technology?
So the current use is limited to our special victims units and focuses on human trafficking, child sex offenses, that sort of thing, primarily human trafficking. So it's a very small group, a very limited use. And I think, based on the discussion we've had, the current language in the substitute would not allow that to continue. The language in the alternate would and would all- The language in the alternate would and would also allow for potential future expansion in limited situations where there's a risk to public safety. I think I captured that very-
Yes, you captured exactly what I was after. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. All right. I now have no other, Alder Bedar.
Mayor, I need to speak, but I can't raise my hand because of the call. Sorry. Chief Wall, I have a question for you. So we just heard Alder Prestigiacomo ask Attorney Paulson if the language was added that says identify and/or locate, whether that would cover your current way that you're using this technology, which is in those limited instances that you just described that are covered under the second substitute. If that language is changed to say identify and/or locate, would that then cover the current use by MPD of this technology?
I think it would, yes.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you, Alder.
All right. I'm sorry, Mayor.
President Carter.
Yeah, I'm just so sorry about that. But can I ask if the sponsors are willing to accept that friendly-
President Carter, we're about to move into debate.
Oh, are we?
I believe that Alder Prestigiacomo is intending to make a motion. So-
Okay, I just wanted to make sure they were willing to accept it because I think it's vital to this.
Thank you, President Carter. So I don't see any further questions. And so I'll just remind us that the current motion is the second substitute. And Alder Prestigiacomo, did you wish to offer an amendment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to move an amendment to substitute two, changing the, oh, gosh, I don't have it in front of me, changing it to identify and locate, and that is subsection, whoop. Sorry, identify and locate. Does someone have the exact number right now? I'm sorry.
Yes, Alder, I believe it's sub 4A.
Yes, 4A, identify and locate.
And so it would read, to identify and locate individuals who are victims of human trafficking, child sexual exploitation, or missing children. That's your motion, Alder?
Yes.
And it's submitted by Alder Bedar. So what's before us now is the amendment.
Can I ask a question, Mayor?
And questions for staff on the amendment.
Mayor, can I ask one question to Alder-
Alder Bedar.
Alder Prestigiacomo.
Please.
And slash or locate, be okay?
Yes, yeah.
Just want to make sure we have, because it's, so and slash or locate. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I assume there's no objection from the body? And slash or locate. All right.
And Alder Henneck had his hand up while we were talking.
Right. So is there a discussion on the amendment? Seeing no discussion on the amendment, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the amendment? Seeing no objection, record a unanimous vote in favor of the amendment. And so what's now before us is the amended second substitute. And Alder Henneck.
Yes, I would like to move the alternate.
All right. Alder Henneck moves an alternate. Is there a second? Second. President Carter will second. All right. So what's before us is now the alternate, is there a discussion? Excuse me, Alder Henneck, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, please. So I appreciate the sponsor's amendment to the substitute, but I do think, don't think it goes quite far enough. I think that there is absolutely limitations that need to be put on this technology. And I think especially on how new it is and how rapidly it's developing. But I don't think that a ban on all other uses is the right way to go. I think that in limited areas, that there's still a significant benefit to the public and a very limited risk to the populations that we've been hearing about and discussing tonight. I think that in situations such as the Mayfair Mall example or school shooting or something like that, utilizing this technology in those instances and allowing for the development of the tool has a significant benefit to public safety. So that's why I support it. And I think that it also allows for a more effective language in the use within what we are currently doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Prestigiacomo.
I first want to start out by saying, just, I mean, I implore all of you, please, please, think back to the testimony that we had tonight. Those with lived experience, scientists with real degrees, with real data that have shown there's both automation bias, a racial bias, so many flaws. And, you know, it's beyond me why, you know, it's something this controversial. And I would also like to make note that, you know, this issue of equity and racial bias wasn't really something I heard MPD talk much about. And so I'm at a loss for words. I do think that, you know, seeing something like this immediately after we heard just, you know, over a large group of people with lived experience explain how they don't feel safe. And frankly, that's the reality. If anyone's going to say that there's a public safety issue in this community, the public safety issue is that there are Black and Jewish people of color who don't feel safe. And this will exacerbate that. You cannot separate that link. And I also want to make a very, very important distinction. A reason why we did not include allowing this to, you know, MPD to use this in any investigation to corroborate any crime is because there is a bias to it. There's a flaw. And again, when anyone says that, oh, it's not a full primary, you know, decision maker in any case, there's an automation bias. This is a recorded bias about when automated AI intelligence spit out data. There is a bias there. And so, like, there's just so many different problems with it. And, you know, we've heard study after study recommending that there's a moratorium. So I would just say, like, please, please understand the ramifications of what this might do by allowing MPD to use facial recognition, yes, even on felonies, to identify suspects or criminals. The opposite, you know, is true for victims. It's a completely different scenario. They're trying to locate. You know, in this situation, this can lead to something extremely detrimental. And I don't have to go on about the impacts of the criminal justice in the U.S. and especially, you know, wrongfully convicted people. And also, the disproportionate rate that all of this has on Black and Jewish people of color. So I would just really encourage you to think about all the testimony that we had tonight and, you know, the raw science and data and experts that have all testified onto why, you know, substitute two is, you know, the right way to go here. And that opening this up to, you know, criminal investigations is not something we can do. And frankly, is a public safety issue for marginalized communities in Madison. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Campbell.
Thank you. I will be voting no on this alternate because the intention of this ordinance to begin with was to put a moratorium on all facial recognition technology, but to allow the use where it's being used in the special victims unit. The reason why, and, you know, you might not believe this, but this ordinance is not about the police. This ordinance is about the technology and the people and the safety of the people of Madison. Council, we have been working on surveillance issues for three years now. Earlier this year, after two and a half years of study and research, the council passed a surveillance data, surveillance data and equipment and a data management ordinance. And at the end of our deliberations in that president's work group, the topic of facial recognition software came up. And we decided not to incorporate it into that, but to do something separate. So this is the something separate. It comes from years of study and research. And it's about the fact that we do not, we want people in Madison to feel safe and to feel, and to know that there are no city resources, there are no city cameras, there are no city technology in any agency that is going to take their image and add it to one of these mass databases that, as former Alder Resnick said, are not regulated. There is no state regulation. There is no federal regulation about this. The technology has proven to be unreliable and faulty. And we don't want our residents, visitors to be subject to the city collecting that kind of information and adding to those databases. We also don't want this technology to be used to further worsen the racial disparities that there already are in our criminal justice system. You know, Chief Wall talked about, well, you know, it's just one tool and there are human processes that evaluate the results from that tool. Well, the human processes have gotten us to where we are today with the really shameful racial disparities in arrests, in juvenile detentions especially. And that's just not acceptable. So the point of this ordinance is to say no to all face recognition technology until such time as, you know, if there's a time when it becomes regulated, when it becomes more reliable, when there are good frameworks for use around it, we can come back and alter this and allow other uses on a case-by-case basis. But for now, the sponsors of this, we all feel very strongly that we want to stop it before it starts. We don't want Madison to be known as a place where you come and, you know, and get mass surveilled or get, you know, even if you're in a crowd and there are police and there are body cameras, if your image is being uploaded into one of these databases. So I urge you to support the second substitute, which, as Chief Wall and Assistant City Attorney Marcy Paulson said, now with the amended language, will allow them to keep doing what they're doing to locate victims of human trafficking of any age and missing children and people who are victims of sexual exploitation. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Balday.
So I am glad we found the magic word, which is locate, to add it to the substitute. So coming into this meeting, my approach was that I am not going to tie the hand of the police department to say you cannot use any tool that can help you do your work. But based off of the questions and answers that we had from the chief, I think it is very clear that at this point in time, the substitute as amended will help them do the work that they are using this tool for. And so therefore, I am going to support the substitute. I, you know, I would, you know, encourage my colleague to maybe, you know, file his because it is very clear from the police chief that this is what they need the tool for. Being in the software industry for almost 20 years, every technologist will tell you, make sure that by the time you deploy your product, that it is a very good product because it is much more expensive to fix it after you deploy it and it's not doing the work that it's expected to do. So that may be reasons why Microsoft and others decided not to, you know, share this tool with other people. And so also voting to say you are not going to use this tool widely outside of what you're using it for now does not mean there's the seal on the cuffing. I mean, 10 years down the road, five years down the road, the technology may be so perfect that all of us, again, will think that in fact it is good to give this tool to a police department if they need it at that point. But at this point, I do think that the amended substitute fixes it for the police department. And so that is what I am going to support. And I hope my colleague can just, for sake of, you know, what the police need, you know, file the alternative. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Tierney.
Thank you, Mayor. I've put a lot of thought into this proposal since I've, over the last few weeks. And I have to admit, like, one year ago, my thought process on it might have been entirely different. You know, just a few thoughts. I mean, one, we live in a society where every day people go on Facebook, TikTok, Twitter, Snapchat, et cetera, and they load up information, put it into the cloud, whatever. And, you know, on their phones, they allow tracking. So we are a society that people, whether they know it or not, sacrifice a lot of their personal privacy as a matter of convenience or entertainment or what have you. I also look at this proposal and recognize that it will have no impact on the Capitol Police, UW Police, Sherwood Hills, Maple Bluff, McFarland, Fitchburg. So those communities, whatever policies that they want to have in place regarding this technology will remain. And, you know, I could very well envision a situation where, you know, a crime occurs and, you know, people are seeing similar crimes with the police in other jurisdictions having the advantage of being able to use the technology and being able to narrow down a list of suspects and guide their investigations more and then coming back to us and saying, why can't MPD do the same thing? So that's a concern. I also have a lot of concerns with our current state of affairs in this country with eyewitness testimony. You know, earlier tonight, some folks were talking about the Innocence Project. And I read a report, the Innocence Project ad. And the figure was, for the cases nationwide that they were able to use DNA to exonerate people, 70% of those cases were people that had been wrongfully convicted on the basis of eyewitness testimony. And so it's something that people have biases, you know, depending upon how ID process is conducted. You know, if people are shown a live lineup or a photo lineup and they are led to believe that the suspect who committed the crime is actually in that lineup, that influences people to make a decision, you know, choose somebody that's in a lineup, even, you know, just because they're under the impression that there must be somebody that committed the crime that's in the lineup. So our current system, I think, is just so deeply flawed that I would very much like to have a technology in place that could one day counter the human biases and give people that are being wrongfully get out of lineups and that type of thing, more, you know, more of a defense opportunity, I guess you could say. With this technology, one of the things that is of concern to me with the way the proposals tonight are written is impacting all agencies. I understand why people may not want to expand the use of this for the Mass and Police Department at the current time, given the level of the technology. However, you know, I think about like a year ago. You know, I certainly had no idea that we'd be in the middle of a pandemic and that our public health departments would struggle with contact tracing. And oftentimes, people that don't believe COVID is real and aren't cooperative when they get a phone call asking who they've been in contact with and that sort of thing. And, you know, as this technology improves, you know, I could one day see it being something that could be utilized by public health departments during a public health emergency where if they know- where if they know there's an event that's been held and it was photographed or videotaped, you know, they could go to their, you know, police department and say, you know, we have this event. We know somebody was, went there that had a communicable disease, tested positive. Can you please run this through photo recognition software so we can try to get a better handle on who all these people are and be able to contact folks? So, you know, I see use this outside of law enforcement where technology like this could be utilized to help save lives and give us better leads in terms of route to contact. So it's a difficult thing. I'm also leery of putting some things in ordinance that, you know, very well, you know, a year or two, the technology changes and it's better. Well, then, do we have to go about the process of reversing an ordinance? And we have to go about the process of overcoming, you know, public doubts about the technology. And, you know, it's something that I think I would have more of a comfort level if we said it was a true moratorium where unless there were certain standards that were met that the software couldn't be used. But that once there is a verification that the software does come back with a certain return rate that can give you some greater level of assurance that its accuracy is, makes it valid, I guess, that, you know, then, you know, there could be some kind of trigger in place that would allow its usage or expanded usage. That'd be something I'd be more comfortable with. So I'm going to vote for the alternative because I also believe that, you know, it's not just about children. I mean, my own personal experience in Madison, about 15 years ago, I remember I was walking home from work and it was a god-awful hot day. And I came across an elderly lady who was disoriented. She didn't have her purse. I lived downtown at the time, and I could just tell there was something up. And so I walked her over to the police department and rang the bell, and an officer came out. I remember we took some time to try to find out what her name was and try to determine who she was. You know, fortunately, the officer was able to find out what her name was and track down where she lived and return her to her residence. But, you know, that's the kind of thing where, you know, if she would have been unverbal or something like that, you know, perhaps having access to software, you know, where they could have taken a picture of her and helped to match up who she was and be able to get her home. That's something that I think should be a tool in the toolbox that the police department has. So those were just my thoughts on this. So thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue. The motion before us is the alternate. I anticipate the desire for a roll call. So I will, Alder Harrington McKinney.
I was getting at the last minute. This has been a very healthy discussion. And my challenge is when we summarily say that, and the Alder said, we want to completely ban the use of surveillance, facial surveillance. And that discussion, there was a lot of discussion back and forth. The first was to totally ban facial recognition. Then the second was, substitute was to add some exemptions. And then the alternate opens the door for the Madison Police Department to continue their work and then also opens the door for a possible expansion. I have heard all the conversation about the disparities. I get that. I hear that. And so that's where I'm struggling in. But to, my challenge is it is about the Madison Police Department. My colleague said it wasn't about the Madison Police Department. But all that discussion is about the Madison Police Department and the lack of trust of the Madison Police Department. That's what I heard. But I also am aware that we are in the process of hiring a new police chief of staff. And the culture of the current Madison Police Department has been on display vividly. And the culture of the Madison Police Department and the hiring of who will be our next chief of police chief will make a significant difference in the culture. We have just seated the Citizen Advisory, but we just seated them. I think Monday night was their first night. So we are intentionally beginning to look at, how do we make Madison a place that's safe for everybody? And where I am is that we have not, we've been talking about facial recognition, but we have not addressed the social determinants of health, where people live, where the people work, everything that impacts their lives and putting our money and our budget where these distinctions are. And so the face recognition piece is one piece of the overall piece of how can we create a healthy, safe environment for everyone? We have to look at all of those pieces. And so I have changed my mind back and forth, but I am going to support the alternate as put back, put forward by Alder Hennig because it has possibilities that don't close the door completely. If we find that with all of these entities that we're putting in place, that we do need to come back and say, okay, Madison Police Department, what are you doing? Then we can put those in place. And so I'm not, I'm not where I want to totally shut down the possibilities of what can be. So I will be supporting the alternate.
Thank you, Alder. Okay, now, we'll move to a roll call vote. The motion is to adopt the alternate. I'll ask staff to keep themselves unmuted, please, while I try and unmute everyone and ask the clerk to call the roll. Vervier.
No.
No. Wihelia.
Come back to me, please.
Yes. Vice President Abbas is excused. Alboris.
No.
No. Balday.
Uh, no.
No. Bidar.
No.
No. President Carter.
Yes.
Yes. Evers.
No.
No. Foster.
No.
No. Furman.
No.
No. Harrington McKinney.
Yes.
Yes. Heck.
No.
No. Hennick.
Aye.
Aye. Campbell.
No.
No. Lemmer.
No.
No. Martin.
No.
No. Preste Jacomo.
No.
No. Rumel.
No.
No. Skidmore.
Aye.
Aye. Tierney.
Aye.
Aye. Wihelia.
No.
Madam Mayor, it was five ayes and 14 noes and one excused. Thank you. I'll mute you all again. With five ayes, the alternate fails. That returns us to the main motion of the second substitute as amended. Is there further discussion?
I have for a roll call.
Seeing none, we will move to a roll call vote. And without objection from the body, I'd like to ask the clerk to add me as a sponsor of the second substitute. So the main motion is the second substitute as amended by adding the words "and" or "locate." President, or excuse me, Alder Bidar. It's late.
Since we're doing it, I would like to be added as a cosponsor.
Thank you. Ask the clerk to add Alder Bidar as a cosponsor as well. And we'll move to a roll call. The motion is the second substitute as amended. All those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no. As your name is called, I'll ask staff to mute themselves as we unmute you all and ask the clerk to call the roll. Vervier.
Aye.
Aye. Wihelia.
Aye.
Aye. Vice President Abbas is excused. Alboris.
Aye.
Aye. Balday.
Aye.
Aye. Bidar.
Aye.
Aye. President Carter.
Aye.
Aye. Evers.
Aye.
Aye. Foster.
Aye.
Aye. Furman.
Aye.
Aye. Harrington McKinney.
Aye.
Aye. Heck.
Aye.
Aye. Hennick.
No.
No. Campbell.
Aye.
Aye. Lemmer.
Aye.
Aye. Martin.
Aye.
Aye. Preste Jacomo.
Aye.
Aye. Rumel.
Aye.
Aye. Skidmore.
No.
No.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, it was 17 ayes, two noes, and one excused. Thank you. With 17 ayes, the motion passes. I'm going to mute you all again. And that dispenses with item 76.
Mayor, can I ask for a 5, 10-minute recess?
Alder Bidar moves a 10-minute recess. Alder Hennick.
I was just going to ask to, looking at the hour, to take up 46 and 48 for referral. But if we'd like to, I'd be happy to allow for the recess first.
All right. So we'll allow the council to ponder the question of referring numbers 46 and 48 while we take a 10-minute recess. It's currently 10:55. So we will come back at 11:05. Is there any objection to a recess? Okay, that looks like we're somewhere close. So let's give it a try. We'll call the meeting back to order. I'll ask staff to mute themselves while I unmute everyone else and ask the clerk to call the roll. Vervier.
Here.
Wihelia.
Here.
Vice President Abbas is excused. Alboris.
Here.
Balday.
Yes.
President Carter.
Present.
Evers.
Here.
Thank you. Sorry. Furman.
Present.
Harrington McKinney. Thank you. I see you. Heck.
Here.
Hennick.
Present.
Campbell.
Here.
Lemmer.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Preste Jacomo.
Here.
Rumel.
Present.
Skidmore.
Here.
And Tierney.
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have quorum. Thank you. Alder Bidar is trying to log back in. So if you would just watch for her, clerk. Thank you very much. All right. So we're back to the question of our order of business tonight. I'll just remind folks that the current order is item four, item 46, 47, 48, 52, and 77. Alder Evers.
Thank you, Mayor. Acknowledging the important discussion that we just had and that it took the time that it did, I'd like permission to make a motion regarding item four.
I believe that's in order, Alder Evers.
Thank you. The subject matter of item four, Edgewood's repeal of the conditional use permit, the plant commission decision, is of great importance to residents of District 13. And given the fact that we had 60 registrants and we no doubt have lost some of those, it seems to me entirely appropriate that we refer this matter to a special meeting. And I would ask my colleagues to consider a special meeting two weeks from tonight on December 15. And I realize it is a tradition on council to only have one meeting in the month of December and allow for folks to travel and vacation and enjoy the holidays. But one of the silver linings, of course, with Zoom is that wherever we are, anywhere in the world, we can participate and we can meet. I think that we have three or four hours of public testimony ahead of us if we were to try to press on at this point. And I can't speak for everybody who's registered at this moment, but I'm guessing they would rather not have to do that tonight. So I'd ask for a second on this motion and see what you all think.
Second. The motion has been seconded. Alder Evers, I think you and I may have different definitions of a silver lining. But I respect the motion. And I would just ask if we could get Attorney Strange, who is here on this item, to weigh in on our ability to refer and what the proper motion there would be if we haven't yet called a special meeting.
Sure. So I do think that you can refer it. Under the ordinance, well, first of all, under state law, there is no specific requirement that there be an appeal to the council of our conditional use decision. It can go straight to court. So the appeal to council is sort of a uniquely Madison thing and maybe some other places have it as well. But under our ordinance, as it says, the common council shall fix a reasonable time for hearing the appeal and decide the appeal within a reasonable time. This appeal was filed on May 11, 2020. But there were numerous requests from the applicant to refer it. And this would be the first time that the city has referred it. And so I think that it would be in order to refer it if the council deems it appropriate. You can refer it to a future meeting to be determined, to a future special meeting at a time to be determined. And then we can properly notice it once we determine that time. I would just obviously say we would want to do that as expeditiously as possible or just refer it to the next council meeting that's scheduled, in which case we might be dealing with a similar issue. But we could refer it to the next meeting.
Thank you, Attorney Strange. Alder Evers, additional question?
No, thank you, Mayor. Aldo Ramaher.
Thank you. Alder Balday.
Mayor, can we add the additional or the remaining agenda items that we are not able to...
that we are not able to discuss yet to this amendment? It's getting late. People like me have been up since seven and doing training. And so right now I can hardly open my eyes, but I really want to participate in all these items. So I'm just wondering if everybody feels tired by right now. We can add these remaining items to tax amendment and just adjourn for the night.
Alder Balday, I believe that that would be in order. I'd ask staff that are here for any of the remaining items. Again, that's 46, 47, 48, 52, and 77 to raise your hands if there's any reason that they couldn't be referred. And so let's give a moment here. And I want to just ask if, this might be for Attorney Strange, if 12:15 meeting gives us adequate notice for the public hearing on item number four?
Yes, it does. Let me just look real quick here.
I confer with Ms. Stoudt on that. And while you are conferring, we all of a sudden have numerous Alders wishing to speak to the issue. So Alder Balday, did you still have something?
Oh, no, no, no. It's just, you can lower my hand down.
Thank you.
Yeah, I believe that we would. The ordinance requires that the council give public notice and due notice to the parties in interest. It's not a class-two insertion where we have to put it in the newspaper. It's basically the same kind of notice that we do for a regular council meeting. So I think that we would, December 15th would be fine.
Okay. Alder Evers.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess regarding Alder Balday's recommendation that we put all these items together, I hope that if my colleagues are in favor of that, but on the other hand, having a special meeting that's focusing just on the Edgewood issue, which is likely to take hours and hours in and of itself, may be wise and refer the other items to the January 5th meeting.
Thank you, Alder. As it currently stands, the motion is just on item number four. And we'll see what develops here. Alder Lemmer.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to mention that Alder Foster and I have promised our districts a community meeting on Cimenta. And we've been promoting the date of December 15th for the last several weeks. So I'm wondering if Alder Evers would be open at all to having Edgewood on the January 5th agenda.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Hennig.
Yes, I was just in. We've got a number of items tonight that there are many people in our community who took the evening to speak on. So I would like to hear from the applicant, if at all possible, on the proposal to refer.
Okay, Alder, I'm not exactly sure how we're going to get to that, but I will keep that in mind. Alder Bidar. And while we're here, let me ask staff to make Alder Bidar co-host, please. Alder Bidar.
Thank you, Mayor. I would support referring item number four to a special meeting. I think maybe the idea of Attorney Strange is a date to be determined that needs to be determined quickly, but not maybe tonight, tomorrow. There are other dates in addition to the 15 that could work, like the 14. So I think we can work the magic of doodle tomorrow. And for the other items, I would specifically support the idea of, none of them seem of an urgent matter to me unless there is urgency for the emergency order. But if it's okay, we can refer them all to January 5th. And the last comment that I will make is I do not think it is appropriate to hear from the applicant and then not to hear from anybody else that may have an opinion about the issue, which are the members of the public and constituents of Alder Evers. The applicant has asked numerous times to get it referred. And so again, I think Attorney Strange's advice is a sage one, that if we do it on a timely basis, as usual, he's always has sage advice, but that we refer to a special meeting that's timely, I think we're good.
Thank you, Alder. Alder. Now, you all are jumping around here. Alder Heck, I believe you were next in the queue. Zoom is doing funny things these days.
I lowered my hand briefly, so I apologize. Thank you. I agree with Alder Bidar that we don't need to choose. But I know on the 15th, four of us have Landmarks Ordinance Review Committee at 5:30. So there are going to be a lot of conflicts, but I agree, we don't have to decide tonight.
Thank you, Alder.
Just.
Attorney Strange.
Sorry, I can't tell if my hand is raised or not. I mean, one option would be that you could refer it to January 5th, subject to the possibility of finding a date for a future meeting. That way, at least, it's referred to something that we know is definite. And you can work on finding a possible date for a special meeting. And in doing, you can also work with the applicant to make sure that they're available on that date as well. That might be a middle ground to make sure that you refer it to a date certain, but still leave yourself the chance of doing a special meeting before that.
Thank you, Attorney Strange. Alder Evers.
Thank you, Mayor. As usual, Attorney Strange finds the key to the lock of figuring this out. Question for John. How much time do we need to notice? Is it a week? Is it two weeks? Is it 10 days? I mean, if we found a date next week, would that be sufficient?
Well, it's, I mean, it would be governed by the open meetings laws. And that's why I think, which is technically, you know, 48 hours. But I think that's why it would be a good idea to be able to talk with the applicant to obviously make sure that they're available. We wouldn't want to spring a meeting on them in 48 hours and then find out they can't be there. And the default would be that we just hear it at the next council meeting. You refer it directly to that. We talk to them about a possible special meeting. I mean, frankly, this is what we did with the Zoning Board of Appeals hearing. The Zoning Board of Appeals way back when regarding this matter was a special hearing. And so in that case, we worked with the applicant on finding a date that would work for everyone. Said it, noticed it, had it. Everything went fine. But the default could be to just to refer it to the next council meeting. And if we have to go till 6:00 in the morning, then we do it. But we try to avoid that in the meantime.
Well, with the mayor's permission, I'd like to amend my motion.
Go ahead, Alder Evers. I have some, well, I'll see what language you offer. I have a suggestion as well.
I would like to amend the motion that we refer to January 5th. Communicate with the applicant on a possible interim or earlier date for a special meeting. And vote on that as the substance of the motion.
Is there any objection from the body? All right, seeing no objection from the body, that's the motion before us. Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Okay, Madam Mayor, I can lower my hand because I was going to. It's, the hour is growing late and many of us have been going all day. And we have to be responsible for our personal wellness. And to move into a discussion of the other items, I don't think that it is something that we want to be doing and that can give our full attention to. And so I definitely would suggest that Alder Evers' amended motion be accepted so that we can call it a night. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder.
We have a whole pot of coffee brewing and you're going to end the meeting.
President Carter, I'm not a coffee drinker, but I'm pretty sure it'll keep. And I hear that iced coffee is good. So the motion before us is to refer item four to the January 5th meeting or a special meeting before that that would be scheduled with the agreement of the applicant. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, item four is referred to the January 5th meeting or to a special meeting that we might call before that. And I will ask the council staff, my staff, the clerk's office, and Attorney Strange to work and, excuse me, Ms. Stoudt as well, to work together to find a special meeting date that might be amenable to the applicant and the council and for us to get the word out about that meeting as soon as possible. Now, on the balance of the agenda, which is items 46, 47, 48, 52, and 77, would somebody like to make a motion referring those items to the January 5th meeting?
I move that we refer those items to the January 5th meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded to refer the balance of our agenda to the January 5th meeting. Alder Balday.
I know, I was just going to make the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any, are there any questions or is there any discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of referring the balance of the agenda to January 5th? Seeing no objection, we've referred the balance of the agenda to January 5th. Should we continue the tradition? Alder Wihelia has had one meeting to get used to it. Alder, would you like to make the motion to adjourn?
Yes, I move the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of adjournment? Seeing no objection, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much and have a good rest of your night.
Thank you.